Okay. Okay, welcome to the February 5th Select Board meeting. And this meeting is being recorded. If you could please, oh, but before I start, I just want to say thank you to Nate Beishine, Nathan Kent, and Joe Dulett for taking care of bringing this recording out to everybody. If you could please join us for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
David, could I have those?
Yes.
So this is always an exciting time for us because we get to honor Swamp Scott's local scouts. And tonight, we have the Girl Scouts with us. And these are a special group of Girl Scouts. These are the Silver Medal Awards. And so tonight, we want to honor them. And what I'm going to do is just, let's put out your, I'm going to call you all down here, if that's okay. So we have Summer Pierce. Sophia Armstrong. Ainsley Miller. And Alessia Lupieri. If you girls, if you wouldn't mind, if you could just introduce yourselves and then just tell us what your projects were.
Okay, I am Summer Pierce. And for our project, me and Alessia, at the traffic triangle in Walker and Sheridan, we took out the existing plants and replaced them with native plants because it's better for the animals that are around and the native pollinators.
For me and Sophia's project, we passed a bylaw to, with plastic topware for like, when you're like ordering takeout to like alleviate some of it. And also with trash pickup.
I'm Alessia. And for me and Summer's project, we took out bad plants to help the animals and community.
For me and Ainsley's project, we have, starting in the summer, be more trash pickups, especially by the coast where the trash is constantly overflowing. It can go into the beach where it can harm the wildlife there.
Awesome. Hold on one second, girls. We might have a technical. You all right? Okay, so does anybody, do we have any questions from the board?
No, great work, girls. Really impressive, honestly.
Thank you.
I know all the work that is involved. I used to work for the Girl Scout, so it's incredible what you did. Congratulations.
I just have one question. We are going to be putting up a plaque inside Town Hall that has every scout who has achieved an Eagle Scout Award in Swamp Scott and a Gold Award in Swamp Scott. So what does it take to get from silver to gold? And is that something that you'll be working towards?
Yes, silver is the second highest award you can earn in Girl Scouts. And me and Sophia are both going on to earn that.
And how long, how long will that take?
In the next couple of years, probably like two to three, because we're currently working on a journey, which is something that you have to earn before we can start the process of our Gold Award.
All right, great. Before you leave, can we just borrow those backs? We can get Mr. Thompson's autograph on them.
Sorry. Come over there, I'm sorry.
And then I have one more question. Tonight, tonight we read a proclamation for Black History Month, and I was wondering if you girls wanted to read the proclamation? All right. Doug, do you have those?
Black History Month. Whereas, February is Black History Month, and we call upon the citizens and public and local officials of the town of Swamp Scott to honor the history and achievements of Black Americans, to reflect on the centuries of struggle that we have brought us to this historic moment of time to live up to the founding principles of our nation in the town of Swamp Scott. That all the people are created equal and have the right to be treated equally throughout their lives. And whereas, this observance affords a special community opportunity to become more knowledgeable about Black heritage and to honor Black citizens who have contributed to Swamp Scott's economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And after the Civil War, exodusters migrated from the South and settled in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. They brought with them the desire for economic opportunities, freedom from oppression and harassment, and freedom to create their own lives. The settlers played an important role in settling the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the town of Swamp Scott, as well as the rest of the United States. In 1915, Dr. Carter Goodwin Woodson, noted Black scholar and the former enslaved African-Americans, founded the Association of the Study of Negro Life and History, which was later renamed the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History. And Dr. Woodson initiated Black History Week, February 12th, 1926, for many years. And the second week of February chosen to coincide with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln was celebrated by the Black peoples in the United States. And in 1976, as part of the nation's bicentennial Black History Week, was expanded and became established as Black History Month, and it is now celebrated all over North America, Canada, and Europe. While the observance of Black History Month calls our town's attention and the continued need to battle racism into both society that lives to its democratic ideals, this year's celebration and recognition of Black History Month are especially significant as we reflect on the historic challenges facing our community and the nation at this time. We acknowledge that Black history is American history, stories and facts fully interwoven in the political, economic, cultural, scientific, and democratic fabric that make up our great nation. This year, we are proud to celebrate the key elements of 2023 George Floyd Justice and Policing Act, banning chokehold, restricting to no-walk warrants, and other efforts supported by the Swamp Scott Police Department that define the best practices with community policing, including the recent hiring of the most diverse group of Swamp Scott police officers and firefighters in the history of our town. These efforts have helped to advance the public trust and safety as we build a brighter, more inclusive future with our town, our Commonwealth, and our nation. The town of Swamp Scott is proud to celebrate Black History Month and pledged to our continued commitment to build a welcoming community, one that reflects the full talents and diversity of the American people, and that celebrates Swamp Scott's third annual Juneteenth celebration, among other efforts by Swamp Scott and the broader community that is committed to build a future that is inclusive in order to confront deep racial inequalities and the systematic racism that continue to plague our community and nation. The town of Swamp Scott commits to doing everything in our power to demand that we all seek a greater understanding and implement changes to ensure that racism, anti-Semitism, and the just unjust treatment of any person is not tolerated in any way, shape, or form within the town of Swamp Scott. Swamp Scott unites, respects, and brays sure diversity, will host a Black History Month celebration on Tuesday, February 25th, 5:30 PM, at the Swamp Scott High School to share important conversations about Swamp Scott's Black history and to work to build a more inclusive community. And now therefore, the town of Swamp Scott hereby establishes February 2025 as Black History Month. And the town of Swamp Scott, Massachusetts, and encourage all faith-based and nonprofit organizations, residents, businesses, and civic, public, and institutions to acknowledge, honor, value, and celebrate Black citizens, and celebrate our diverse heritage and culture, and continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for us all. And witness thereof, we have hereunto set our hands and cause to be affixed at the great seal of the town of Swamp Scott, Massachusetts, the fifth day of February 2025.
Well. Well, thank you very much, girls. Great job. And we'll see you for the Gold Award, right?
Yeah.
All right.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so what will now move to public comment. If there's anyone here for public comment, which three minutes and take your time. Please remember that the Select Board doesn't comment on your public comment. If you could just give your name and address.
Yes. This is high enough. Deb Newman, 20 Bond Stible Street. And I thought there were only two minutes, so I'm happy.
Deb, wait one second.
Okay.
They're going out, so you have.
Oh, all right. Oh, thanks. Good?
All right. We're good.
So I got some incorrect information from two department heads. One said there were no rodenticides used on public property, and the other said he didn't know what was used. So I decided to go find out for myself. And I checked 12 town properties and found various bait boxes. Five of them are carbon dioxide pumps. Seven have labels stating that they're, I'm not going to pronounce this correctly, but Brody Facuum, perhaps, which is an anticoagulant rodenticide. Some of those boxes had T-Rex-type snap traps in them, too. It's just like a snap trap, but it's got teeth. Thirteen of them had no labels, but the box themselves are called Protective EVO Express or EVO Express. And eight of those were from Modern Pest Services and had a label stating they were Smart Boxes, which are bait stations that let the trapper know digitally if someone's been caught. All 13 of those are designed to hold bait bars made from second-generation anticoagulant rodenticide, other poisons, or Contra Pest, which is a contraceptive for rodents, and T-Rex snap traps. So we don't know, in the unlabeled ones, what is there. Six of them with no label or identifying info on different properties, like no label at all, nothing. One had Cholecalciferol, which is a high dose of vitamin D. Unfortunately, it takes about a week to kill a rodent because they get kidney failure or heart failure, so it takes a while. One had, said that it had Contra Pest in it. I was surprised to even see that anywhere. One was called a Critter Catcher, which is described as a live capture trap with bait to catch small animals like rodents, squirrels, or other nuisance wildlife without harming them, allowing for relocation to a different area. Yet, that is illegal in Massachusetts to move wildlife from one place to another unless it's on the property where you found it. So, you know, my complaint is that we shouldn't be using rodenticides, as many people feel. And personally, I would like the method for killing rodents to be a little more humane than CO2. The best thing is a shock box, maybe coupled with Contra Pest. And, you know, I have a whole spiel that I can go through at another time, if you'll allow me to do that. So one other thing I just want to mention, I had also asked that the flyer on the town website about rodent control be changed to remove the recommendation of glue traps, because those are incredibly inhumane. And the other thing I asked was to please qualify the recommendation of simply calling an exterminator, you know, for residents, just call an exterminator if you have an infestation. Because they are allowed to dispense rodenticide, anticoagulant rodenticide, to homeowners and, you know, on the property. And they may also not fully disclose that once they remove a rodent, even if they catch it humanely, that rodent will be painfully euthanized in a CO2 chamber at their office. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Is there anyone else for public comment? Mr. Smith.
Frank Smith, 6 Archer. I just came here tonight to say thank you. I was here at a previous meeting in which I had requested information that was overdue be released to myself as a result of a public records request. And at the time that I made that request, it was many days overdue, weeks overdue for that matter. But the very next morning, lo and behold, the information made its way into my inbox. So I just wanted to thank you, Ms. Veltcher, for what you've done for us in releasing that information and making that accessible. I believe that there is something to be said for this process, and I just wanted to say thank you. That's all.
That was nice.
Okay, so not seeing any more hands, we can move on to the Town Administrator's report.
Sure thing. I am pleased to be able to off the following report on programs and initiatives that are going on currently in the town of Swamp Scott. Town Administrator, we continue to meet daily with Amy on the FY26 preliminary TA budget presentations. She claims she's not getting sick of me, so I think of her patience. Met with Chief Archer and Amy also to continue discussions about the Fire Department OT budget, which continues to be a little bit of a concern, but committed to do the best we can. Met with the Capital Improvement Committee team, Patrick, Amy, and the School Department on Friday to discuss the school's FY26 capital improvement projects. Patrick, Amy, and I met with standard and pause to discuss the draft preliminary official statement for the upcoming sale of Barnes and else. Interesting. Kings Beach, we opened the bids Thursday, this past Thursday, for Phase 2A of the Kings Beach Sewer Infrastructure Improvements Project. Good news is, the engineer's estimate was $8.7 million. An apparent low bidder, National Water Main, who's worked for us previously, came in at $1.8 million. A great savings there, so means we'll be able to do more work, essentially.
Yep.
Public Works, staff has dealt with three minor storms over the past week and a half. It looks like we're going to be, that was me, sorry. Looks like we're going to be busy over the next few days as well. We got a small storm coming tomorrow, which I decided not to call a snow emergency for because it's only going to be one to three inches. And typically, when we call a snow emergency, it hurts the businesses because it doesn't allow for parking on the street closer.
Can you put that closer to you?
Yep. Anybody that's been out on Reddington, Greenwood, Forest Ave, saw that we're dealing with a water break. This one wasn't simple. Usually when we have a water break, we're able to isolate it with isolation gates. The gates aren't working. We're chasing it farther and farther down the street. Have to come up with a plan. It's going to cost us a few dollars. When I'm going to have to hire a company to come in and put in a surging gate in there. That way, we can isolate it. Two of the three sides are working, the third one, we're chasing farther down Deven's, Reddington. It's become a little bit of a nightmare. We're going to, obviously not going to be able to work tomorrow. I'm hoping that Friday, we'll be able to get EJP in here to put the insurgent gate for us. Finance. Finance continues to work on the FY26 budget, as I previously alluded to. She's also working on capital improvement plan development and the annual town meeting warrant. Community development, we held a pre-kickoff meeting with Penn Trails to discuss the design process for Archer Street. Also reached out to the neighbors to update them on the process. Oh, this is all a credit to Mazzy, by the way. A virtual meeting to kick off the trail design and build will be on Tuesday, February 25th. Information can be found on the town's events calendar. Thanks, Mazzy. Facilities, Max is working with Nahat on an energy manager grant, which is quite a... Max is also working with Jonathan, preparing an invitation for bids for the improvements to the library entranceway. Town Clerk, Jared, processed 163 voter registrations. A little bit, over 1,000 census forms have been returned to the clerk's office, and he had to make amendments to 800 of those. So assuming most of them were small changes, but changes that were necessary to be made. Police Department, Chief Casada has signed up officers for a free Holocaust training program, which was interesting. I found that out today. The chief also relayed to me that the Swamp Scott Police Department will not be assisting either ICE or DHS with any potential deportations, unless it's a serious crime they'll get involved. But if it's just to come in, we're not getting involved with that. Fire Department was awarded a $19,000 grant through the Commonwealth Executive Office of Public Safety. This equipment funding will be used for the purchase of fire hose, nozzles, and fittings. Additionally, two new hires began working for the Fire Department this week, bringing the apartment to a full complement of firefighters. I asked Graham this morning if he could set up a date to introduce the two new firefighters. He said that the last three were hired, were not brought in, so he was going to bring in all five of them and introduce them to us. Assessment Department has accepted exemption and abatement applications through the end of the last month, and now will begin the abatement process. Health Department, Health Department continues to monitor state sites for information on communicable and infectious diseases. Presently, bird flu is pretty prominent. Health Department continues to manage, coordinate, and work on programs and initiatives related to the opioid settlement funds. Health Department also continues to manage the Health Department podcast, which, I haven't seen one of those yet, and I'm actually looking forward to it. So I'll have to get on schedule to see one of those. Yeah, they're pretty interesting. Human Resources sent their employee handbook to town council for review, and Marion and Mazzy last week interviewed a candidate for the open senior planning position. Recreation Department, today is week four of their ski Bradford program. Typically, there are two buses with 90 skiers attending this six-week program, which is in its 18th year. Kudos to Danielle. Planning is on for a new spring event. I thought this was pretty interesting. The Derby Day event, we're going to use our new TV screen and projector on Derby Day to have a nice little event. That should be interesting with all the hats and everything that go along with that. I like that. And Danielle is currently working on scheduling a public safety day for this summer at Phillips Park. Senior Center, this year's Swamp Scott for All Ages Conference will focus on keys to a successful retirement and will be held on Saturday, March 22nd. Additional information will be on the town's website and Facebook page. Library, Jonathan is attending a legislative breakfast on Friday to discuss library needs. Jonathan has concerns that smaller libraries subsidize in some of the larger libraries in town. Not exactly sure what that entails, but I know it was a concern.
Is that for the local network, which is the platform that all the libraries use?
And because we're smaller, we end up subsidizing them more than the large ones? Makes sense. Jonathan and staff completed building the library's renovation page to help keep patrons updated on the progress and timeline of the front entrance redesign and new children's entrance project. Once approved by the trustees, this will go live and will be updated regularly. That's it for my TA report. Any questions?
Questions?
Brief one, much for you to know the answer. We approved Resiliency Scope of Work that was bid out and awarded to Kleinfelter.
Yes.
Any idea when, if that's starting, anything?
I can tell you that the contract was signed by both parties, and it was sent over to Kleinfelter, and I'll find out when they're looking to start.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? I have two questions. One is on the, the new projector that we have.
Yes.
Could we get more, could we get a schedule of more programs that will happen with that projector?
Yep.
And on the Holocaust, the free Holocaust training?
Yeah.
So does that mean that there's, how is that, the training is free, or is the town, is there overtime involved in this?
No.
It's just, everybody has a chance to take Holocaust training?
Exactly, with no impact to the OT budget at all.
That's great. That's really great. Okay. All right, so with no more questions, now we will move to discussion and education on what an executive session is. One thing that has been going on, has been several comments towards the Select Board, that we are having so many executive sessions. As a matter of fact, on a recent town platform, there was an email sent out to members of that group citing the numerous amount of executive sessions that we're having. So Danielle asked at the last meeting if we could have a little bit of a clarification of what is an executive session? So we do have a So we do have a slide, we can show you and help educate really what an executive session is, and what does it mean, and how does it impact the town. So Marissa, do you have that slide?
Well, she's pointing out Mary Ellen. Are we having the public hearing, or no?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, actually, I'm sorry. I jumped one, I don't know why I jumped one.
You're excited to get to the executive session.
I was. So why don't, we'll do the executive, the public hearing doesn't have a time on it, so we'll just finish this and then jump to the public session, public hearing. Is, do you have the slide that shows how many?
Yes, yep.
So first, there are three, on this slide here, you will see information that was put together by Diane Marchese. So we set it out for chair, fiscal year, and election year. And you will see over, under chairs, if you wanna look under Chair Spelios, 19, Chair Tinkum, 11, Chair Duffy, 30, Chair Greshman, 26, and Chair Fletcher, 26. That's what you have there. Election cycle, 5-1 to 4-30, 20-21, you have 13, 22, 30, 23, 25, and 24, 26. And fiscal year, you have 21, year 21 is 15, 22 is 22, year 23 is 26, 24 is 25, and 25 is 23. This helps give people an idea of how many executive sessions we actually have. And we do have many executive sessions. It's very important, we're gonna go over now why you have an executive session. I'd like everyone to understand that these executive sessions are also a significant amount of time that select boards have to put into it. So it's not where you just call an executive session and you sit around and have a cup of coffee. There's some serious work that has to go into it. The serious amount of time that we take away from our families and other things that we can be doing. So I'm hoping that this will give a good idea. So now we can go over the description of what clarifies an executive session. So you could scroll up, Marissa. You wanna take this?
Oh, sure. Do you want me to read it? Well, this was provided by our council, and this is a handout which they provided, which basically states Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, subsection A. It gives the reasons for convening executive session. One, to discuss the repudiation character of physical condition or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual, or discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individuals. Two, to conduct strategy sessions and preparations for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares. Four, to discuss the deployment or strategy regarding security, personnel, or devices, for example, a sting operation. Five, to investigate charges of criminal misconduct or consider the filing of criminal complaints. Six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. Seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements. Eight, to consider or interview applicants for employment by a preliminary screening committee if the chair declares that an open meeting will have a detrimental effect in obtaining qualified candidates. This clause shall not apply to any meeting regarding applicants who have passed a prior preliminary screening. Nine, to meet with a mediator regarding any litigation or decision, provided that, one, any decision to participate in mediation shall be made in open session, and that the parties disclosed, and, I'm sorry, and the parties disclosed. And, two, no action shall be taken with respect to the issues involved without deliberation and approval of the action at an open session. Reason 10, to discuss trade secrets or confidential or proprietary information regarding activities by a governmental body as energy supplier, municipal aggregator, or energy cooperative, or if an open session will adversely affect conducting business relative to other entities making, selling, or distributing energy. And then on the backside, it gives the procedure for convening an executive session, which is the process by which each chair must take, once it's met one of the options on the front, the meeting must convene in an open posted session with executive session listed on the agenda when reasonably anticipated by the chair. A majority votes in a roll call, a recorded roll call, to go into executive session, and the vote is recorded. The chair must state the purpose of the executive session, including all subjects that may be revealed without compromising the purpose of the executive session. The chair must announce whether the meeting will reconvene in an open session after executive session, and then accurate minutes and other records of the executive session must be maintained with all votes recorded by roll call. And then there is a subsection here which lists out the rights of individuals as it relates to executive session. When a governmental body wishes to discuss the repudiation, character, or physical or mental health of an individual, or the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual, it must notify that person in writing at least 48 hours in advance of the meeting, not including Saturdays, Sundays, or holidays. The written notice may be waived by the individual. The individual may choose to instead have the meeting held in open session. If an executive session is held, the individual has the right to be present for deliberations, to speak, and to have counsel or representative of choice present for the purpose of giving advice, but not for active participation. The individual may have an independent record of the executive session created by audio recording or transcript at the individual's expense.
We will also post that on the town website for people's education. Danielle, did you have any questions or anything?
No.
You really wanted to make sure we brought this up?
Yeah, no, thank you for that. I hope that clears it up for anyone that didn't understand it, or is under the misconception that there have been more under your term than anybody else. So, thank you.
Well, I mean, it's not a full term yet, so...
There will be, there will be more, and actually, I'm very happy to have more. We will not be discussing anything that has to do with the purchase of land or negotiating. We will not be discussing personnel issues out in public. We will not be discussing contract negotiations in public. We will continue to practice sound meetings. And, you know, it's always a vote to go into executive session. A chair does not put a board into an executive session, a chair calls for a vote. So that's how you end up in executive session. You start in an open meeting, you take a vote to move into executive session, and then that's how the process goes. One question you do wanna ask, if you look at certain years, and you look at what was going on during those years, and you're not seeing executive sessions, you might wanna ask, how are these decisions being made? And are your elected officials really sitting there and representing you adequately? And I can tell you, since I have been the chair, I have made sure that I've called more executive sessions so that every member of this board has input. And that was actually a request by members of this board. So, you know, an executive session is not something nefarious, it's an actual necessity. So I hope that helps. And please, feel free to reach out to any member of this board, the Town Administrator, to find out any more information. That's a good question.
Just a quick, just a quick question, 'cause I didn't see it noticed in the KP Law primer. But if we are to bring, if we are to bring someone else outside of town staff into an executive session, how does that typically work? Because there was a...
The rules? What are the rules on that?
Yeah, yeah, what are the rules?
I don't think there are any written rules, but we'd have to double-check on that. We have done it twice this year for information, and to my knowledge, there aren't specific rules on bringing someone into an executive session for information, but I will, I'll look into that for you.
I, no, I mean, I thought, I thought that per, I can't cite it, but I thought that there had to be a vote of the board to allow an individual who is not a town staff member into those, into those executive session meetings, since what we are talking about would potentially be, well, is privileged under one of these various exemptions.
Right. I think at both of those sessions, we did not have discussion in those sessions when those two individuals had appeared, two individuals, that's two separate times, that we received information from them, and then they were asked to leave. But we can look into that. But there was, there was no discussion while those two individuals were there at those two separate times.
I'm not sure that's quite true, but...
That's my recollection. Does anyone have any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to our public hearing for parties interested in application for an alteration of premises at Vinin Square Liquors, 371 Paradise Road, Swambscott, Mass. Can I have a motion to move into a public?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I do have a question. Why are we getting this now, when, isn't this work already started?
I'm sorry?
We're moving, we're having an application for alteration on a premises, and every time I drive by there, I see a lot of construction going on. Am I wrong that this is already going on?
Correct, but...
Good morning, or I'm sorry, good morning, good evening. My name's Elizabeth Pisano, I am at Vinin Square Liquors. With me today is Angela and Tara.
Joe.
As you guys, yeah, go ahead.
Elizabeth, sorry, just give me one second, I'm just gonna respond to Mary Ellen's question, and then I'll let you take the...
Oh, okay.
One is not contingent upon the other. The work that's being done right now is issued with the building permit, that happened after Vinin Liquors came before planning and zoning to have the work approved.
And because the business is already existing as a liquor store, this is just a simple amendment to alter their premises because they are building that addition. And they're actually not increasing the sale space at all, this is just to allow for more storage and inventory, and they're also building some additional office space as well.
So what you're saying is, they don't need, they didn't need this application to be doing that, that work?
Correct.
Okay, great.
Yep. So, can I hand it over to Elizabeth?
Yes, please.
Okay, Elizabeth, take the wheel.
Thank you, thank you very much for that explanation. This application is to expand the premises for their liquor license to store, you know, additional alcohol on the first and second floor. Vinin's been, Vinin Liquors has been in Swambscott for many, many years, they're a great business just into town, and being able to expand their premises will just allow their business to grow further. The new construction is going to be approximately 2,764 square feet on the first floor, and 2,299 square feet of store space on the second floor. And that's really the gist of it. If you have any questions or concerns, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Does anybody have any questions?
I just have, I know Marissa had stated that the, sort of like, the store itself was not changing the way it's laid out, or it's just not expanding its square footage?
That's my understanding, the store itself is not expanding, it's staying as it is, the additional, the addition itself is to accommodate more inventory space and office space, but I'll let Elizabeth confirm that.
Correct, yes, that's correct.
So the only square footage you're adding will be storage?
Storage and office.
And office, okay, but as it relates to the liquor license?
There's a diagram submitted, which is what the venue would look like, but the retail space will maintain.
We don't have the diagram.
As it relates to the actual servicing of liquor, it's just the storage space, that is.
We don't have a diagram.
We don't have a diagram.
Oh. I don't know.
That's okay.
I can pull it up if... Do you want me to try and pull it up, or, no?
No. Okay, so if there's no questions, then can we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
You too. Good luck, Elizabeth.
Thank you, bye.
Okay.
We don't need to adjourn that, do we?
Yes. Can you motion to adjourn the public?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay, Town Administrator's preliminary budget presentation?
Just...
If this actually says, this says not including school, but I actually had told Diane that we would have questions about school on here, so...
So does it include the school?
So because the school committee hasn't voted on their recommended budget yet, that's why at this stage it doesn't officially include the school.
But if we wanna make comments about the school, we can make comments about the school, right?
This presentation does not include the school.
Right.
Okay.
But...
What does that mean?
Wait, if the line item on the agenda says it does not include the school, how can we comment on the school?
Exactly.
The presentation references school, you will be able to...
Because there's a line item...
On one of the slides.
So there's a line item in the budget that references the school, but your comment is, if this agenda clearly says...
Does not include.
Right, like if somebody, if somebody were in the public reading this agenda, and they were thinking, oh, they're not gonna talk about the school budget tonight, so I'm not gonna show up to this meeting and hear what they have to say, then I would think that that is what you would read from this, and so if we are gonna talk about the school, that that might naturally be the best.
I think it would be helpful to have the whole context, whether or not we talked about individual line items in the school budget. I think it's useful to view this in the context of what the, what we all know, we had a public meeting about it, about what the school budget is, so we have, we're thinking about everything together. I don't think anyone can preclude us from putting those pieces together.
And Amy, is this, is this just a timing issue? Is the school committee meeting like tomorrow and talking about this?
They're doing a public session tomorrow, but per charter, the school committee has until February 15th to vote their recommended budget to the town.
Yep, yeah, thank you.
So right now, you're staying within our timing?
Mm-hmm.
Of discussing the preliminary budget?
Yes.
Okay.
So, on behalf of the Town Administrator, I will begin tonight's presentation.
I just hope there's a line item for heat in this budget.
So this is just an overview of our annual budget cycle. Right now, we're in the budget preparation stage, which is November through end of February. We are presenting the draft budget today to present the Town Administrator's recommended budget by March 1st. You'll have the budget book in advance of that. Finance Committee will work on their budget development in March and April, leading up to the town meeting voted budget on May 19th, and then throughout the year, it's just implementing that budget until we continue the cycle again. For revenue, this is just a highlight of the Swambscott financial policy. I'm not going to read this slide, this is the exact same wording that I had on the December presentation with the preliminary revenue projection. Just an overview of our financial policy with the 2% new growth, I mean, 2% of the property tax levy, plus 425,000 of new growth, our estimates for local receipts and outside revenue sources. Here is a breakdown of how the revenues line up in Swambscott. So 82% of our revenues come from our tax levy. We have about 10% coming from state aid, 7% coming from our local receipts, and 1% coming from indirect costs through the enterprise funds. I just thought that this was helpful as we go through and talk about where, you know, local receipts might be down, state aid might be up. Those are, in fact, the proper directions, so to know how much of the overall revenue that's encompassing. So the tax levy limit for FY26 is $63 million, that's based off Prop 2.5, not Swambscott policy. The maximum allowable levy, which is the levy limit plus the excluded debt, is $67,900. The tax levy per Swambscott's 2% plus 425 policy is $61 million.
Without the debt.
Yep, because our policy does not factor in excluded debt.
Yeah.
Um, based off the governor's proposal for state aid, we currently have an increase of 5.88%, which is 430,000. That still has to go through a few more cycles, but at this stage, we use what we have. Local receipt estimates have decreased 18.85% or almost $1.2 million. Um, as I stated at the previous meeting, this is primarily just due to the decrease in investment income and in building permits. So we no longer have all that borrowed money for the new school sitting in the bank collecting interest. And then the indirect costs from the enterprise funds are just over a million dollars. So for anyone who may not be familiar, those are costs contained within the enterprise fund, but are used to support the enterprise funds. So, health insurance for those employees gets paid through the general fund, and essentially the enterprise fund pays that back through these indirect costs. Does anyone have any questions before I move on the slide? So overall, our preliminary estimate for FY '26 is $74.9 million. For reference, this is about 1.28% above FY '25. Going into expenditures, the majority of the departments are complete at this stage. Um, this is just a list of them. Going through, I broke them up by their cost centers to at least make it a little easier to read. Um, biggest items, debt and pension, are already set for the year. Items that are still being developed are property casualty and workers' comp insurance. We are waiting on the premiums. We're meeting with the risk assessment team next week from, um, some of the insurance companies to go through before they quote our new policies. The salary reserve is still being developed. Um, as you're aware, we have three bargaining units, as well as a few individual vacancies that are contributing to that salary reserve that is still being fine tuned. Um, obviously, we are still working on the Swampscut Public Schools number. We have not yet received the assessment from Essex Regional Voc Tech. Employee health insurance, we will not be receiving those rates from the GIC until about a week before open enrollments. We're anticipating those the end of March. As of right now, we're still going off the 10.5% rate increase that the GIC had in their original presentation. State assessments, much like the state aid, will continue to evolve as it goes through the House and Senate. And then enterprise funds, we're just waiting on updated numbers from Lynn Watersewer, MWA, and, um, our solid waste noise in contract.
So Amy, with the 74.9, you're assuming the 2% policy?
Yes.
Plus.
Plus 425,000 of new growth.
And the debt exclusion, that's separate?
Which bubble are you looking at?
The 74.9.
That is inclusive of your third bubble, so 2% of the prior year tax levy plus 425,000 of new growth, no factoring in of debt exclusion.
Okay.
This is just an overview of the departments as a whole. I obviously shrunk down the line item to get them to fit on this slide. So, some of our budgets are flat, some you'll notice are down. For any vacancies that we have, we have them budgeted at the low end of the range and then have the higher end of the range in salary reserve. So likewise, you will notice a decrease in the town administrator's budget, and that is just due to the vacancy itself. Human resources, you'll notice a decrease. That is the elimination of the DEI coordinator at the recommendation of the DEI consultant, as well as the hiring and recruitment costs for police and fire, um, in working with our new, um, HR manager. She requested that those funds be removed from the HR budget and moved into the police and fire budgets respectively.
Under Veteran Services, on the breakdown, wh- what is the breakdown of the, the actual employee or agent, the actual agent? There's, there's two separate things. There's agent.
The service agent is $30,000 a year.
What was that?
$30,000 a year.
Mm-hmm. And do we have a contract with Lynn?
We do.
How long is that contract?
I will double check it. We might be going into the last year of it. And this is just the back half of our budget. Um, as you will notice, we have a slight decrease in our debt service for the upcoming year. And that is because we have the additional monies coming in for the school. Um, so when we re-ban that, it's, the principal is being banned lower, so the interest is less.
And have you factored in a projection, we have money coming in to relieve the debt service, but have you looked under capital as far as refilling some of that debt service with solar options, as far as the canopies, things that will give you.
We have been factoring those, um, the debt savings from the additional reimbursements for the school and seeing where that can be reallocated for the solar canopy. So that is in the upcoming, uh, debt forecast.
Right. Did you say the other day that we don't really expect those monies from the school to significant a debt reduction to impact FY '26?
It won't impact FY '26, it will impact the future borrowing years. The earliest we'd see it enough is FY '27. And then to get a little off topic, um, the town administrator is going through capital on Monday to review, to recommend, uh, projects to CIC. So that process will keep moving as well. Um, as you'll notice, employee benefits is a very big increase, and that's based off that 10 and 1/2% on the rates for GIC. When we do our health insurance projection, we use the January enrollment numbers. And as of right now, we're assuming every single plan is going up 10 and 1/2%. And based off that, plus the contingency of the vacancies, we're looking at a little over a million dollars increase in that line. Obviously, the hope is that the rates do not in fact come in that steep, um, to give us some relief.
How long do we have on that contract?
We are under contract until the end of FY '26, and that's dependent on our, uh, renewal of the PEC agreement. Otherwise, it will auto renew for another two years.
When do we have to notify them that we are possibly leaving?
By December of the year, it's expiring.
So that means? This coming December.
This December.
And we have that on the calendar?
Mm-hmm. We do. So obviously some challenges. Our revenue has only, is only increasing 1.28% over FY '25, which is $950,000. And as I stated, our health insurance alone is going up more than that.
Our health, so our revenue is coming in at 945 and our health insurance is going in, is, wow.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a good thing, uh, good thing I dye my hair, cause these grays. Um, the department head requests, uh, came in at a 6.83% increase or 4.8 million dollars over the FY '25 budget. Um, and as I stated, ad nauseam, the GIC health insurance. We also have the salary reserve, so we have police, fire, and library collective bargaining agreements that are expiring June 30th of '25. Um, we have the vacancies for, uh, town administrator, building inspector, and town planner. And then we also have, um, five individual employment contracts that are coming up for June 30th, 2025. I do have an asterisk here just cause they all have a one-year auto continuation in it, so they expire, but it's not hard to expire. So where are we going? So, the town administrator and my team will continue to work to balance this budget over the next couple of weeks. Um, obviously some difficult decisions to ensure that we are providing the town services. And we're funding those at an appropriate level while also focusing on our fiscal discipline and our financial policies. We'll be publishing the town administrator's recommended budget book by the 20th of this month. And then we'll be back to present to the select board on March 5th with a balanced town administrator recommended budget. After that, it goes to the finance committee review, who will be recommending to annual town meeting on May 19th.
Wait, when does it go to the finance committee?
It will go to, so at that meeting on March 5th, um, which I believe last year we, it was done as a joint meeting. I don't know if that's something you want to do again. But it will go to finance committee right after that, so it'll begin working on the finance committee's recommended budget.
So Amy, when you say department requests were 6.83%, um, that's just the town side?
Yes.
And you, unless I'm missing it, when, the column that we're looking at here for 2026 budget team adjustments, you don't have a total here, do you?
No, I omitted the total and omitted the, uh, school from this presentation.
That was convenient.
To comply with what was in the timeline.
So, can I ask you this? Um, for the town side to stay compliant with the, the fiscal policy?
Mm-hmm.
What is the gap between what you have, what you're, where you're at now compared to that policy?
Um, 1.7 million dollars.
At our 2%?
Mm-hmm. So we've gotten the, uh, 4.8 down to a 1.7.
Did, did we really comply last year with 2.0 or, because when I was looking at that grid, there was a time when we did dip into the, into the levy, didn't we?
Yeah, so when you use one-time monies like stabilization or free cash to reduce the tax rate, it gets added back into the levy the next year. So the year where we used, um, free cash, general stabilization, and capital stabilization, obviously the stabilization funds don't flush through the levy the same way, so that year it shows a dip into our excess. Believe that was FY '23.
So what is the impact, I'm not sure if you'd have the answer to this, but what is the impact on the average, on the average tax bill when we go from 2.0% to 2.5% including the 425 in new growth? What is, what does that actually mean?
I believe it's about $40 on the average, but let me double check that.
We need more of this game show.
If you don't have it, we can.
No, my thing keeps losing connection as I go through. I will continue to find it if you guys have more questions.
Okay. That's just a, that's a question I'd like to know.
That's a good question.
Mm-hmm. In the future.
Are you talking?
Pretty relevant.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
You know, at some point, we do have to start talking about, um, we have to start talking about the unused levy. We have to start talking about this publicly, because we do have other committees in town that are talking about the unused levy and as if it's a lottery that we could start jumping into.
Are you wanting to tap the unused levy, Mary Ellen?
No, I'm not wanting to tap the unused levy. I'm just wanting to talk about, you know, do we have a need to tap the unused levy? Are we, is the unused levy a liability to the taxpayer? What are the benefits or the cons? Because right now, we do have, what do we have, a $7.5 million unused tax levy?
Mm-hmm.
And, at any point, we could be tapping right into that without a townwide referendum. And.
I think there's a step before that, right? I mean, which is to say, you know, this 1.7 million over the 2% policy. I think another correlated question is, what does that equate to on our share of the town budget? Where does that put us? If, if we were, if you, you and Gina said, pencils down, that's it, can't cut anything else, 1.7 million, what does that equate to in terms of a percentage for our side?
I will give you that. $44 was the average single family.
From the 2.0 to 2.5?
For the additional half a percent.
No, I'm, I'm talking about above 2.5.
I know, but well, I mean, you could extrapolate. Is it not another $44 if you go from 2.5 to 3?
Yeah, so if you assume every 300, every additional 300,000 for rounding purposes is gonna be an additional $44.
In the average, for the average home, what is the average home, 750?
Our average home was just shy of 770.
So then, what does the 1.7 million equate to in terms of percentage? Are we at 2.5 or 3 or 4 or, not saying we're, you know, that you guys are done, but I just.
I mean, if you want us to be done, that's the purpose of tonight, for the board to give that guidance.
No, thanks.
Did you say half a percent was 300,000?
What?
No, that, no, she's saying, uh, $44, half percent for the average tax bill.
But the total gains us 300,000.
Oh, no, it doesn't gain a 300,000 to the budget, right?
Too many questions.
Go ahead.
So.
Answer, Doug.
The extra half a percent going from 2% to 2.5 would give us almost $300,000 added to the revenue, I think was what Gina was saying. Which is the $44 impact. So, if Doug is asking if we add.
1.7.
1.7.
An additional 1.7 to that.
And you're at like, just 5% or something.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's good perspective to have.
Yeah.
That there.
So as part of your discussion with your, your department heads and looking at the budget, has anyone undergone an actual analysis of the FTEs in town hall? Where you've actually gone line by line, position by position, to see where there might be overlap, where there might be, considering the predicament we're in, where you're actually looking at the value of each position as it relates to the budget. Has that happened?
Yeah, the short answer is yes. You know, we've sat down, and I don't wanna get into the weeds because it could affect people, and I'm trying our best, I don't wanna try not to eliminate a position, but we have had some discussions and there are a couple, but I wanna try to do everything in my best interest to avoid doing that. But, we have discussed it.
I appreciate that, but I also appreciate, um, you know, when we're prepared to look at other departmental budgets in this town, police, fire, schools, I think it's, it's, it's upon us to actually make sure we're doing the same due diligence with town hall. I think that's the only way we can ever sit here and say, you know, this budget should be smaller, this position could go. I think it, it has to start at home first, at, at least in my view, right?
I agree.
As hard, as hard as that is and as painful as that is, I mean, I think that's a necessary.
I would have learned in the past too, you never get the full savings of that position because of the unemployment too. I think there's a little bit of an offset with that that we always have to factor in.
Offset is usually short, the offset is generally short term, though. The other piece too is the GIC. I mean, have we ever considered coming out of the GIC?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and.
But have we done the, has anyone actually seen the analysis of what the difference is?
Last year.
Yeah.
We tried, yes, we tried.
Mary Ellen and I met with Sean, and we had brokers come in and, but then we realized the contract wasn't up until this year, so.
We didn't notify, we, we missed the date to notify GIC that we were contemplating leaving. That's, so that, that forced us into this year.
Cause we, I mean, I have seen a lot of other towns offer incentives to employees to not take health insurance, right? So literally where you'll give them X if they can provide the documentation that they've got health insurance from a spouse or somewhere else, like you literally will. like you literally will incentivize them to not take, you know, because you look at some people and they, they're on a family plan and, you know, maybe it's costing two thousand a month through the GIC every month, you have to think about how much we're, you know, the percentage of what we're paying, I mean, it's just, it's done in some other towns, so I just wondered if we had explored that here.
We could do that now though, couldn't we?
It would have to be negotiated into the PEC agreement, this was looked at a few years ago, and we spoke with a number of other communities, and they did not see the savings that they thought that they were going to, and we discussed all the fail safes of.
What communities did you contact, David or Melrose, either of those?
I, I can go back and double check because it was a couple of years ago, but there, they had fail, fail safes in place where you had to have, you know, been on our insurance for a certain amount of time to get the incentive to come off, you have to stay off for a certain amount of time or you have to pay it back, you can't have the spouse hopping if both spouses work in town, and they were, they were still saying they didn't see the savings, obviously that was, you know, only a year or so out of COVID, so everything could have changed since.
Okay.
Do you want to talk about any specific lines?
Yeah.
So do you want to say a little bit about the assessor line and the DEI coordinator, because we haven't really heard any report out of that consultant, so this is just kind of like popping out for me about them recommending not to have this position.
So the assessor includes changing the part-time assessor to a full-time assessor and funding that, so you'll see an increase in that budget to reflect that change.
With that amount, I mean, why are we recommending more than what the department head is requesting?
Not all of the department heads participated in the budget process, so if they didn't turn anything back, their request was input at their, same as their FY twenty-five.
Well, that's, no, because that's not the case here.
No.
Right, because they're very part-time, and it's at fifty thousand, and now suppose the department head request is one forty-five, and then the budget team is at one seventy-seven.
Right.
If that's just a.
That doesn't.
An errant number, that's fine, but that's, doesn't look like a town-level salary, even if it were full-time.
So like I said, for any of the vacancies, it is budgeted at the low end of the range, and then any higher amounts are in the salary reserve, so this is funded at an eighty thousand dollar department head position, which was, is in line with a number of our department heads.
So you're saying that the, the assessor's office with a part-time position is now going to a full-time position at eighty thousand dollars?
Mm-hmm, plus, plus something else, right?
Plus, right, what else is comprised of that?
It still has, it still has an admin in there, and then it has a admin stipend that is going to another employee who is helping with that admin function when the part-time admin is not in the office.
Okay, so those, that, that amounts to like, more than the full-time assessor's salary.
Right, that doesn't, that doesn't make sense.
Anyway, just maybe, we don't need to, maybe just explain that or scrutinize that a little bit, seems like.
Yep.
And then DEI?
Yeah, and then DEI.
When I met with the HR manager, she, I went through her budget, she indicated that the consultant said that we are not at a point to move forward with that position and recommended not funding it, so that was based off the department head recommendation.
Is there a line, is there a line for, are they saying, well, what, what are they saying we should be doing?
I heard not yet.
Not yet, right, and that, the purpose, I mean, this was a placeholder in last year's budget, that's, or was it last year, the year before even?
Sure.
Last year, knowing that, and then the consultant's, the timeframe for which we hired the consultant took longer, and then that's why the fifty became sort of unused, but just because we can't make a recommendation today, doesn't mean we can't keep the fifty in there in the hopes that we will be utilizing it for something related to a position there, but the consultant is saying there's no position that will be recommended, and they're making that claim, I have not heard that claim, but.
I haven't either.
It, it was also based off, you know, if we're looking at cutting positions, cutting non-currently existing positions.
Sure, I mean, that makes more sense than.
Right.
The consultant's saying.
Are the two of you working with them?
We are.
The consultant, yeah.
Yeah.
Is there a time when we're going to see any, anything about that?
Yeah, honestly, to be honest, Doug, with all the other exciting stuff going on in town, it's kind of been on the back burner, and that's mostly my fault, and, you know, not to say it's Katie's fault, it, you know, it hasn't been the forefront, we have done a little work, they have done, they sent out a survey, they've put some stuff on social media, and they have gotten some feedback, but we, we kind of have a timeline for the spring in terms of rolling it out and having a couple of events, so we're in the initial stages, but we haven't quite done as much as I would have hoped by this point.
Yeah, that, that's fine, it'd just be whatever they, whatever backup to this recommendation would be nice to see.
You heard it here first, Doug, just like the rest of us.
And Amy, you said the salary reserve line is incorporating kind of the catch-all for contracts, et cetera?
So it's five individual employment contracts that are coming due, three completely vacant, plus the transition of the assessor from part-time to full-time, and then the three collective bargaining units. So yes, quite a catch-all.
That all made sense to me, except now the assessor's in here too?
So the low end of the salary is in the line, and then any additional, so if you post a job from, you know, sixty to seventy, you're, the line will be budgeted at sixty with ten potentially in salary reserve.
Amy, what is comprised of the IT line, is that solely the, the HIQ or whatever it is that?
That is one line of it, so that is library computer maintenance, equipment maintenance for all non-school municipal buildings, that is the HIQ outside, that is our financial system of munis for the town and school, it's our phones, it's all the software at the police department and fire department, wireless phones, building software, DPW software, all of our software and SaaS subscriptions, and then any, a very small amount for any hardware and equipment replacement.
How long of a contract is HIQ, and when does that renew?
I can double check, I believe we have a few years left on it.
So it would have just renewed probably. I didn't think we had a contract with them, I thought that they just rolled over last year. Do you think it's a contract? Okay, does anybody have any other questions?
Where's the animal control officer in this?
In the police department.
In the police department, okay.
That was moved a few years ago.
Parking enforcement line item is really what?
That is, if you are going to see the parking enforcement officer, which currently is Max Casper, to fight your ticket, he is the hearings officer, so he will meet with you, dispute it, and give his ruling.
So that's a stipend, I assume?
Yes.
What is recreation, is that salaries, what is that, what is GF?
The recreation for general fund that you're seeing is the lifeguards, so it's the auxiliary staff, and then it is the lifeguard supplies, beach sticker expenses, and the deposit for the Fourth of July fireworks.
So where does this, where does the recreation staff come out of?
That comes out of the revolving fund.
And I know I asked this before, and why don't the lifeguards come out of the revolving?
Right.
The revolving fund can only be for programming, so because people are not paying to go to the beach, we cannot charge the lifeguards to it.
So everybody gets to use the lifeguards?
Yeah.
It's not a, it's not a recreation.
It's a public service.
So you wouldn't, you wouldn't want to have people that are doing programs subsidizing the lifeguards, that wouldn't be fair, so that's why the lifeguards come out as it ticks.
It also wouldn't be legal, so we can't do that, yeah.
Or you could charge people that go to the beach to actually have the lifeguard watch or not.
So is now the time you want to have a philosophical conversation about the budget, or?
Yeah, I do. You know, so you're saying if we stay within our policy, if you stay within our policy, we're short, we'll.
We're short before we started.
One point seven million.
Right, I mean.
And that's on top of the schools, which is similarly over.
So at what point do we look at the policy?
Do we ever?
We should look at it every.
There have been, there have been calls, right?
Seven hundred thousand, right?
Yeah, we're, we're doing a financial policy overhaul this summer, and we'll be making recommendations to the finance committee and select board on any changes recommended to that, but as.
That doesn't really help us now, does it? Summer doesn't help us.
As, as slide three says in the presentation, it is, it is a guideline, so it says, in the event the town administrator determines the aforementioned constraint is insufficient to meet the budgetary needs of the town, in any given fiscal year, the town administrator may request the select board vote to authorize a budget that exceeds the above constraints, provided the tax levy is computed within the expected prop two and a half limitations.
I think at this point, it would be helpful for Amy and Gino to understand sort of where we're positioned, on if we're interested in a strict reading of the, you know, staying in the financial guidelines, and, or if we are open to budgets that do not, understanding the financial impacts this has on the taxpayer, but also, you know, as Amy said, we're supposed to be coming upon a sort of re-review of our financial guidelines in the summer, but that is not going to help us right now, we have our budget, we have, I mean, it's all our budget, but we have this budget, and then we have the school budget, and we have multiple collective bargaining agreements coming up.
We have that in the reserve too.
Understood, but I mean, it's impact, it's going to, it's an impact, and it's an issue that we have to think about, I think.
And I just want to clarify something, I think I just said something inaccurate, just in case anyone was actually paying attention to what I say, which is that seven hundred thousand is over and above what the town suggested, recommended to the schools what their budget should be, they're not just over by seven hundred thousand compared to a two percent policy.
Correct.
They're seven hundred thousand over by, starting with a much higher number, right? So they're probably over by a couple million dollars as well compared to a two percent policy.
So where did the seven hundred thousand dollar number come from, because we're, did I hear that it wasn't that with the presentation last week or a couple weeks ago from the school department, I thought it was like four something or five?
Four point seven nine percent.
That's the percentage.
No, right, I think it, didn't, when we listened to Cheryl's presentation, I don't remember it being seven hundred thousand, but that could be me, I don't know.
Their, their requested increase was.
Has that changed?
One point five.
What was that?
Their requested increase was one point five five.
No percent, I'm talking actual dollars.
Yeah, one million.
One million.
Five five.
Right, but.
Over last year, which is not the same as.
Right, but I thought the deficit that they were working with wasn't seven, I thought it was closer to five hundred thousand, is that, did I hear that correctly or no?
It's not what I heard.
I think where the seven hundred thousand dollar gap comes from is with a three point two five percent increase over last year's budget, leaves increased seven hundred thousand dollars, correct?
I just thought it was a smaller gap, I didn't realize it was seven, I thought it was closer to five.
I just think it's really difficult for us to make a recommendation without seeing everything, so I would, I would, I'm sure we're going to have this on another, on our next, on our next agendas, and probably on every agenda moving forward, so we can, so once the school committee votes their budget, we can actually see, I'm sure Gino and Amy and the finance team are going to continue to work on the town side to see if there are any savings that we'll be able to pick up, and then I would feel comfortable looking at everything together, once we have the school, which is sixty-plus percent of our, of our budget, inclusive of everything.
Sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight, okay, yeah, I just think it's really tough for us to say this is what we're going to do with thirty-two percent of our budget when we don't have the other sixty-eight percent to talk about tonight.
But I think it is important, you know, for whatever, whoever might be listening on the school committee or whatever, like, the budget as it's proposed, now, now that I've got these numbers in front of me, is effectively suggesting something, well, it's clearly four point seven nine percent more than last year, it's also like four and a half percent compared to that two percent policy, it's actually like at a four, four and a half percent, so when you got four and, four and a half percent, and it's two-thirds of the budget, either the town side is going to have to be like a zero percent increase, or you're not going to have two percent overall.
Well, I would think if there's ever a time that we need to address a correction, you know, because we have all the bargaining going on, and we have a decrease, a forecasted decrease in revenue, you know, I, I think addressing it, going up to the two point five, that's allotted, would be a, a good point, if there's the time to do it, it's, it's, it's now, and then if we needed to go back to an original policy, that would be something in the future, but I think that, you know, you're making, you're making a recommendation to the school to be, what was your recommend, what was your guidance that you gave them?
We gave them three point two five percent.
Right. So even at the three point two five percent in the preliminary numbers that we're receiving, we have a seven hundred thousand dollar deficit, we also have to remember in, what is also involved in that budget is there's a request for five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in capital? And there's also an additional two hundred thousand that we should look to, to put in for the utility stabilization, because National Grid has not been able to put on the solar yet, so that's still iffy, which I, I definitely recommend we, we do that just because we don't know what's going to happen, Senator Crichton is now involved in that.
Okay.
To try to escalate getting National Grid going, and then we have the additional money that we're going to add into the, that, that we're looking to add into the special education. So we're talking about a lot of money here.
Sure, we're not recreating the wheel here to ask you to model multiple sort of.
I don't want to even admit to you how many tabs are on this spreadsheet.
Yeah, because I mean, at this point, I think it's, it's difficult to see how we could fit into our current financial guidelines, not to say we shouldn't strive to be the best versions of ourselves and try to do that, but, you know, obviously we need to understand reality also, and so modeling multiple budget recommendations, I think, is where probably the expectation lies, at least for me going forward here, because as David said, I would like to see it all together, but I also don't want to just see it once. Want to see options.
So the, do you want me to delay printing the budget book, because the budget book was going to be printed on the twentieth?
Yep.
Which would have the town administrator's final recommended budget, do you want to instead, on your next meeting, have another review of the overall budget, because the school of, and then we'll produce the budget book after that for the March meeting?
I mean, I think that makes more sense than putting a budget in the book, we're not a hundred percent certain we're gonna, yeah, that's still, it's going to be a moving target, I think, a little bit longer than we anticipated.
Okay, are we all good with this?
What, what's the state of the tri-chair meetings with the schools and the finance committee?
We haven't had, so I've sent you all updates, minutes, I brought Diane in to send you minutes on tri-chair, there is no update, we haven't had a meeting.
Are there, are there any on the books, or what is, what is the plan? Or is there not one, or is that like kind of off the table at this point, I don't know how that works?
I think it's off the, well, I can tell you that we requested one, Eric and I requested one, but the, the school, Glenn had reservations about it, and I was on board, and I just asked Glenn and Eric to have a conversation, I don't, I don't see, I don't know where Glenn's position is on this, I think Glenn's position is that they're going to be voting on their school budget, and their budget is to the bone, and that there's no, nothing they can do.
So.
That's actually a quote.
Okay, okay, well, so then we shouldn't expect to see anything different than, they're voting it, they have to vote it by the fifteenth, don't they?
You know, that's one person, I don't know, you know, they have several people working, so I don't want to speak for, you know, the superintendent or the business manager, I.
You do have Eric Cartman, let his hand up.
Oh, Eric Cartman? The one from the finance committee, the chair of the finance committee?
Should be able to unmute now, Eric.
Eric, you should mute.
Okay, I guess, hearing?
Yes.
Yes.
I just want to share, Mary Ellen, to your comment about reconnecting with the plan. I had a call with Glenn for about forty-five minutes today, shared some of the concerns that we talked about just generally from the finance committee as far as understanding the school's budget, so my understanding is they are intending to vote tomorrow, Thursday night. But we, we were talking about looking at early next week to have a tri-chair, just to regroup on some of the things that I shared with them today. So there is another tri-chair in the works.
Great.
There you go.
Okay, that's good to know.
I guess two comments, one is well, I'm sympathetic certainly to the situation for the schools. I'm also sympathetic to the situation for the town. It feels, you know, quote, easy to say, oh, well, we're going to go to two point five this year. But then you're creating that base. So just wanted to make that point. The other is that, you know, we had, the school committee kind of invited us to kind of a joint session in the finance committee. Should we do the same at our next select board meeting? Where we all kind of sit together and kind of confront the reality now. Trouble is, once the school committee votes for it, it's a little bit hard for them to.
Unvote it?
Unvote it, or, yeah.
They can.
They can, you know, just human nature though, you know. But nonetheless, I think it would be good for us all to not just invite them to come, but have a joint meeting and, you know, grapple with this together.
Eric, you still there? Did he leave?
No, he's on. He's still here.
He's muted.
Yeah, I'm here.
What do you think about that?
I think it's a good idea, I also had a recommendation from another FinCon member today that at some point perhaps it should just be a direct power of just finance committee and school committee. Just so we can, you know, just sit around a table, you know, literally around a table, and, and talk some issues through without having to, you know, have all three groups here, so I'm sure we can vote, but that was just a recommendation, I thought it was a good idea just to kind of get down to brass tacks on some of the details.
I think the issue is, it's the select board's, it's the select board's budget before it gets passed over to you, so, before it gets passed over to the finance committee, so I'm open, I'm open to anyone's recommendation on that, but.
If, if, if the recommendation of FinCon is that that will alleviate some issues, then I have no, I have no qualms about it, however, it doesn't, it sounds like it's going to happen post the school committee voting, so I guess it's a little cart before the horse, or cart, or horse after the cart. But if, if we think.
Meetings are all, the meetings are all public, so I kind of, I kind of feel like, I don't know, I guess, I don't see any reason why the school, why the select board wouldn't be at a meeting at the same time. Not, I don't really see the big benefit of just the finance committee and the school committee.
Is the school committee required Amy to vote at probably a certain date?
By the fifteenth of February.
Right, so that, you know, that kind of, so their meeting is tomorrow, which is what, the sixth, that would be there, okay. No, I, I think it's, to Doug's point, I mean, he's probably asked for this five times over the past, you know, six months financial summit, and when are we all meeting, and, you know, when are we going to start this, which we, you know, first thought about this last summer, really, right, after a town meeting, and how we were going to avoid another situation like last town meeting, so, and now here we are in February, when, you know, it's time to vote their budget for them, it's, you know, it's a little late. I just wish we had started this sooner and had really more opportunity to speak together and really try to, to work it through. And we only did have that one presentation, you know, which was very informative and seemed so positive from Cheryl, Stella, and, yeah, I just, I wish we had more opportunity to, to sit down all together and really work through it. I think we owe them that, I think we owe the, the, you know, town meeting members that, I think we owe everybody that, to really give it its due diligence as a group.
So we will have a group meeting again. Doug, do you have anything else to say?
I think I've said enough.
David? All right, so Eric, I'll catch up with you. I think I can leave my, my mornings free to, to book a meeting, so I can be pretty flexible on that.
Yeah, it's not that we're talking Monday, Wednesday morning, there you go.
Okay, I can take care of that. Thank you. All right, so moving along. We will now move to the discussion and possible vote on the UV pilot program. I wasn't planning on taking a vote tonight because we've had no information sent to us previously. This is pretty much just getting to know stuff now. So, but we can, we can discuss that. Hi, Mark.
Good evening. Here tonight to discuss the UV pilot program. And I've been attending the water and sewer infrastructure advisory committee meetings. I'm not a voting member of the committee, but I attended the meeting on Monday night and can brief everybody on what was discussed and what was voted on, on Monday. So the UV pilot program, as you all know, Kings Beach has high contamination levels. I think this keeps cutting in and out, Amy. This should be better. So as you all know, Kings Beach has contamination issues and Marissa's got some slides up right now to, to show those two culverts there. Basically, the main cause of, of the contamination at Kings Beach is, is contaminated stormwater that's being collected through two main culverts. One comes from the city of Lynn and one from the town of Swampscott. The stormwater that is tributary to Stacy's Brook collects contamination in many ways, it's, you know, sediment, it's pet waste, it's contaminated connections, it's leaking sewers, it's many, many factors that contribute to the stormwater that's being discharged down through those two culverts, raising the bacteria levels at the beach. As you well know, unfortunately, the beach has been closed many days the last few years because the, the levels have been above the maximum thresholds. So eliminating the sources of the contamination is the best, is the best approach, right? To stop the problem at the root. But unfortunately, we're not there yet, we've made great progress. We have multiple projects going on in town that are either lining or replacing leaking sewers. Some of these pipes are seventy or, or over a hundred years old, and the contractors are working right through the winter installing new pipes around town. So as we continue to eliminate initial sources of the contamination, we've also looked at a program that would treat stormwater at the end of the, end of the discharge, right before it gets out into the ocean, so that leads us to the UV pilot program. On this project, Kleinfelder is contracted directly, directly with the city of Lynn, but we've been heavily involved because there's two culverts and we're part of the problem, just like Lynn's culvert is. So this, this program is basically going to use UV light to kill the bacteria in the water prior to it being discharged out into the ocean. Down at Humphrey Street, where it intersects with Eastern Ave, this project would propose to put two large tanks there on the street. We cannot put them on the DCR property on the grass, so we would utilize the street for this. And there are two hatches, there's one, well, there's one hatch to access the Swampscott culvert, and there's one manhole in the median on Eastern Ave to access, to access the Lynn culvert. So basically, what would happen is in the culvert, a small weir wall would be built. It wouldn't block the entire culvert, it would be a couple feet high inside the, inside of it. And during low, during dry weather flows, the water will hit the weir wall, and a pump will, will suck it out of there, put it through the tanks, treat it with UV light, and then put it back in the culvert to go out to the ocean. So this program, which would run from June to August, would test that technology, see if it's effective, it would get us familiar with it, and see if there's a long-term solution using UV, UV treatment of stormwater. As you can see on the, on the plan, you got the tanks on the street, the pumps in the, down in the culvert, and that would be the, the rough setup of what it would look like down there. Be going twenty-four seven pumping, pumping the water. The reason the weir wall is not the whole way is because if we get large rain events, we still have to be able to get the stormwater out. We already know that we have flooding issues down there sometimes with the tide coming in and the, the culvert carrying large flows, it tends to pop the manholes off down there, so we do need to allow enough water to bypass the weir walls so that it can drain during large storms. Next slide. So what's it going to cost, that's, that's probably what everybody's curious. Our latest, is this, Marissa, is this the?
That's not what we have.
Yeah, it should be eight hundred thousand?
Seven ninety-nine.
What?
It was the one I, I sent you the end of the day there. So the latest, the latest estimate is eight hundred thousand. It's a hundred and fifty thousand for the engineering, and it's over five hundred thousand for the construction. And, and contingencies and everything built in comes right around eight hundred. This, I think the, the current proposal is a split cost between Swampscott and Lynn, since we're both contributing to the issue, and we're both working on the solution.
You mean split fifty-fifty?
Yes, right now it's fifty-fifty.
I, I thought it was seven hundred. Well, first I thought it was five, five hundred, last month it was five hundred, and it was, I thought it was seven hundred last week, and then within a couple days it's eight hundred?
We better wrap and approve it.
What, what are the, after the last discussion?
I had seven thirty, and then this morning I got an updated cost estimate that was eight hundred.
What changed?
The general contractor.
Act, probably act, actual construction costs. The construction costs, the, the equipment itself is expensive, then you got the bypass pumping system, and, and also just getting down in there and building these, these culverts, I'm sorry, these weir walls in the culvert is also a challenge.
But why would it go from seven to eight in not even a month?
Month, try a couple days.
Weeks. I mean, I just.
Yeah, sure.
It actually went from seven thirty to eight because Lynn hired a general contractor for all the weir walls, fencing around it, containment, sound attenuation, and that number came in higher than anticipated, a lot higher.
So they're hiring people, or hiring people, and we're just going to, we're proposed, so they're going ahead and making all the decisions on hiring and cost, and we're just supposed to kick in whatever it is they decide their number is, okay. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mark.
So, so the goals of this program, there we go, that's, that's the one, Marissa, thanks. So, so I could go to the next slide, please, project goals, so what are we trying to achieve? We're trying to familiarize ourselves with the technology. We're trying to hopefully get the beach open. If we, if the program works well enough, the contamination would come down to a reasonable level where we could open the beach this summer. We would get an idea of how effective the treatment is, so that if we wanted to scale it up to the wet weather flows, we'd have a rough idea of what that would entail. Those are the main goals of this project, so the water sewer infrastructure advisory committee put it to a vote on Monday night. Our, our Kleinfelder was there, they, they asked a lot of, I mean, they answered a lot of the questions that everyone had, and it was a five to three vote in favor of the program. It's, you know, like I said, source elimination is taught, is the, is the, is the best option, but we're in a tough situation here, right? People, you know, the beach has been closed a lot, and it's going to take time to get all these pipes replaced, find all these, you know, contamination sources.
So you were on that call the other night?
Yes.
Okay, because I watched it for the full two hours and three minutes, I think it was, and I didn't know that that was you, so.
Yeah, I was on there, but I'm also not a voting member of the committee, so.
Right, do you, do you happen to know, or maybe Liz would know, what the roll call vote was on that? Who voted what, because I'd like to know that, I couldn't quite discern it from the minutes. From my perspective of watching that meeting, it seemed like there was a lot of hesitancy for those that even voted yes, so that's, that's where my concern is coming in, I didn't feel, I think it was Dr. Vokli, Mr. Patsios, they had some real serious questions that I don't think they felt they were getting quite full answers on. Dr. Vokli brought up a lot of things that, that were really concerning to me. But I just would like to see the, I would like to know who voted what.
Yeah, there was three, there was three no votes, it was, it was Vokli,
Yep.
Patsios, and I think Lauren Fisher
Yeah.
was the third one.
And it, it was odd because is, I don't, Mr. Dan Stil, is, that's you, yeah, thank you. So are you, you're a voting member? You were an alternate, so at the beginning of the meeting, I don't think you were recognized as becoming a voting member, but you did end up voting, I, I got confused, so I didn't know. Is, so Mr. Dan Stil is a voting member, Liz?
Each meeting I pick alternates to fill any open sp, sp, positions. So we had two openings, so Terry and Brian both got promoted to voting member there at every meeting, so they're essentially full members.
Because I couldn't figure, I know that he voted at the end, but I couldn't figure out if he was an actual alternate or not, or it was it?
I promoted him before the vote.
I'm sorry?
I appointed him a voting member before the vote.
Right before the vote, yeah, that's what I thought, okay. Brian Drummond, yes, I remember hearing, he was one of the no votes, he had a lot of concerns as well.
Oh, Brian voted yes.
Voted yes.
He voted yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I think he was the one that was questioning the scale and whether or not it would be six times, or whether it would be just dry conditions or heavy rainfall, or, you know, I think his, his questions were about the scale, basically.
Yep, there was definitely a lot of great questions raised on the Monday night meeting, and people have some legitimate concerns about the technology because it's new, right, and it's, and it's a lot of flow coming through there, and it's really.
Dr. Vokli said it, that he was pretty sold on the, on the technology itself, on UV light and whether or not it would work.
On dry.
On, but it was more a question on conditions, whether or not it would work, or was being tested on wet conditions or just solely on dry conditions, so I think that was.
Yeah, I mean, we're, you know, we're only expecting it to really, you know, I shouldn't say expecting it. It's more for dry conditions, right, because we know that. Because we know that during the wet conditions, it's gonna go right over the weir wall anyway. So it's really just, this program is about honing in on the dry condition evaluation of the system.
And can you speak to the pollution aspect of it from the diesel fuel, the generators? There was a lot of discussion about that, how that would be managed or if it would be managed for the, you know, people that, you know, will be seeing this thing on 24/7 in their neighborhood potentially, what the negative aspects of that might be?
Yeah, I mean, you know, people have raised concerns. It's about it being loud with the generators. It could be a hindrance to the aesthetics of that downtown area. In terms of the diesel fuel, I don't know what type of odor or how much consumption it would be. I can't really speak to that. But, you know, it's not, it's something new and different, but it's trying, it's trying to, it's a last, kind of a last resort. That's a bad way of phrasing it. It's not a last resort. It's just trying to get it right before it discharges.
Okay. And Mr. Patzios's questions about the location, I think he was, he had a different opinion as to maybe an alternative location being the Pine Street area. Can you speak to that at all or if that's, if there is potential in that? I don't think there was, it didn't sound like by the call, but...
If it was discussed, I think it was probably before I was here. Maybe Gino could chime in.
Yeah.
Yeah, so Charlie has the idea if we put it on Pine Street, well, Lynn's culvert comes down Eastern Ave and there is an offshoot that comes over to ours. It's been blocked. It's in a state of disrepair right now. But you could potentially set up the UV pilot program. I think he's thinking about the VFW site, whether it's 1214 Pine Street or if it is the VFW site.
So I think he's thinking alternate locations, right? He was the only person really thinking that.
That would also be the potential permanent location. So he says, you know, why wouldn't we use that? I think it's an expensive location. If he's referring to Pine Street, we paid $1.8 million for the piece of property. Wouldn't be willing to pick up that. Some other issues with that because we have allotted manholes and connections downstream that wouldn't be treated from Pine Street down to the ocean. That's a suggestion, you know, it's not totally a...
Right, that's, yeah.
But wouldn't there also be savings associated with it? And certainly, you know, noise mitigation since you do have that heavy power on site right there at Pine. That would eliminate the need to have to rent generators and fuel. So there could be some cost savings for the town. I mean, I, you know, I mean, for me, I think we certainly want to learn by doing. We're not gonna learn by not doing. So we're gonna learn by running this test. But if there's, if there are ways to save the town of Swampscott money, I certainly would want to explore those potential opportunities.
Or save the headache of the butters and residents, right?
So that is definitely an option, but I don't think it would be an option to have this pilot program working by June of this year.
Okay, that's the other piece. Is there, is the rush to this to just get it for the summer? Is that why we're trying to get this, push this through for May or whatever it is, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So I sat and listened to the meeting. I was able to find it this morning on the website. I didn't, no information was sent to us, but I found it on the website. And a couple of questions that, I was surprised at an entire committee, how many questions there were going on and how there wasn't more unity and how the vice chair, Dr. Vokli, was vehemently opposed to this. You know, I walked in there thinking, oh, this is probably gonna be a slam dunk and I walked out with a totally different view on it. It seemed like there was enormous amount of questions that weren't asked. What about the wet weather and how many days would a beach be open? But the most important questions that I found are the questions that I have been asking forever. Let's say this works, it's great. Where are we gonna put it? What are the costs? What are the long-term operating costs? And how long would this process really work for? Now, what I've heard is that it looks like it would be, the UV system would last approximately 20 years. The operating expenses for it are still up in the air and who would pay for that? And then there's the cost to ramp it up. And the fact that Dr. Vokli kept pointing out that why can't we have some type of an estimate of what this would actually cost? Is this a 20 million, 50 million? What is the cost and what is the size and where would we put it long-term? So that's my first, my first comment. I was very concerned with how many questions were being put forth by committee members and that there were no answers, constant, we don't know, we have to look, we don't know, no answer. The other comment that stood out was, I think it was, one of the engineers from Kleinfelder said that at a recent conference he was at, the DEP and the EPA both said that they were in favor of a outfall versus the UV. That the UV was not a permanent solution and their focus was more on the outfall. And then the last thing is, where are we with additional testing? Have we really identified, is there a possibility we can be doing chlorination and dechlorination? Could we be, what is the timeline on actually relining all of these pipes? Because I think in the presentation that we had in the fall of '22, the relining of all of the pipes, wasn't that a three to four-year project at $12 million? I'm going off a memory on here.
I think 12 million would complete phase two and there'd be one other phase, which would be phase three, roughly another $10 million.
And would that be for the full lining of all these pipes?
With the 10 million we've already committed, yes.
Okay, so my concerns are that, A, I listened to, I listened to a committee of, you know, scientists, engineers, and some business people and they had a lot of different views, a lot of different questions, nobody answered questions. Even though I heard, I think, two or three people vote yes, but all the questions they had prior to the yes were all the reasons why they shouldn't have it and why they didn't have the information. So it's, this is, this is a real, this is a real tough call.
That was one of those.
And as much as, I guess I don't really see, I don't see why there's a rush if we don't have the answers. It seems like, it just seems like this hasn't been thought out enough. And then the, my biggest question is options. What other options do we have? And what have we really vetted, super-vetted? Like chlorination, dechlorination, the pipes, the outfall? How much, how much are we doing there to really find out what can be done? That's all I have to say.
I know both EPA and DEP fully endorse source elimination.
As opposed to UV?
Opposed to UV, the outfall and everything.
First option, yes, option one.
So I remember, I mean, I used to, Sean would often say the outfall extension pipe was his, if I'm remembering right, that was his first, like, gut reaction to what would be the best approach. But how have, have we explored that? Have, I mean...
No, we pumped the brakes on that a little bit because we know we don't have the support of a state delegation there against it.
So our representatives?
Are against it. It's gonna impact the heart.
No, so, so yes, so to that, to that effect, we do have our state delegation that is requesting that we...
Look into this.
That we look into this UV pilot and we test this and we test out this technology. And again, just to set the record straight, we did receive an email from Liz Smith immediately after the Water Sewer Infrastructure Advisory Committee, which did notify us of the five-three vote. I've watched the two-hour meeting. I thought there were definitely some good questions that were asked. You know, there were definitely some answers that remained, certainly. But I think just given the fact that this has been such a long and drawn-out problem that we've, that we've been dealing with in town and that the focus has been on addressing this and moving forward and looking to solve the problem, this is an incremental step. This is an important step so we can figure out how we can learn about this technology. If this technology, which is a technology mainly used for wastewater, can be implemented for stormwater, yes. Honestly, I think, I don't know if it's gonna work for stormwater. I don't know, which is why we want to do this test. And it only makes sense for us to vote today so we can have this in place for the summer beach season. If we're gonna, if we're gonna wait and have this in place for, you know, October, it doesn't help us get that information that we so desperately need and to take that step that we so desperately want to do. We wanna, we wanna be part of the solution here. We want to make sure that we're, that we're addressing this. And if it costs us $400,000 to figure out that UV is not the way, is not ultimately the final solution and we're moving on to the pipe, at that point, we will then have the support, in my view, the support of our state delegation of, from Senator Crichton and from Representative Arminy and from the DEP and the EPA to move full steam ahead with the outfall. But without taking that incremental step, we're never gonna, we're never gonna get there. If this proves to be a total solution, then we have, you know, we have other issues that we need to tackle, such as siting and et cetera. But we need to take this step and I think, I'm certainly recommending that. You know, I'm not excited about having to spend $400,000. But again, I'm excited about taking that incremental step that is absolutely necessary to fix, you know, a 100-year-plus problem in the town of Swampscott and in the city of Lynn and for the region and on the North Shore. We need to do this. We can't, we can't wait.
I have a couple of questions. So there was like a mini, mini pilot done already, right? There was some, like, extremely small-scale testing done?
Yes.
And that showed, I don't know if I've ever actually seen the results of that. I assume they were relatively positive and that's why we're talking about this?
They showed that UV works, we know UV works, and it showed that it worked on the water from the culverts. So at that level of turbidity.
So that was the question, no, about that? Because it was small-scale, but also it was like pretty, was non-turbid water, right? So that was the question, really, right? So I guess...
Yeah, we know it doesn't work in turbid water. That's why there's a holding tank so that it can settle and then it goes into the UV tank.
And so I guess, why does it, why do we have to go to this scale? Like, this is, this is the first jump we need to make from something that we did for two days or whatever it was and we have to go to this scale right away for three months? I mean, I know we want to, you know, keep the beach open and that would be like a home run, right? If this actually worked, except for like super rainy days? And if Dr. Vokli thinks at least the technology...
Well, any rainy day plus 72 hours, right?
What's that?
I think it's any rain, it's not just super rainy days.
Yeah.
Rainy days, sorry.
We don't know.
Well, this test won't, this one test won't tell us about rainy days.
We're thinking less than a quarter of an inch of rain without doing, right, without doing any real...
We think so, but we have to test that, we don't know. And it depends on how long, how many hours.
But all the non-rainy days, we think this could potentially have the beach open where it wasn't last year.
Unless they're post-rainy days.
Right, because it's close for 72 hours.
The 24, 48 hours.
It doesn't necessarily have to be close that long. It'll depend on what the testing tells us.
But we won't have a test result for 20, well, we won't have test results for at least 24 hours.
Right, but it may be, we'll be fine and we won't have to wait 72 hours.
But isn't that what our signs say, that we make people wait?
Well, we don't make.
We don't have results.
Or that's the recommendation, 72 hours.
Because we're not treating the water.
So you're saying those signs would potentially change with this pilot?
Yeah, they could, but probably not till we've gone through a whole summer. I don't know.
And so why do we have to do the whole three months? That's not necessary to show whether or not it works, right? I assume you would know within a month. As long as there's a couple of different conditions of rain or whatever during that month, you would know. But the whole three months is really just assuming that it works.
I think, I think by the time you get the equipment out there and set up and build the weir wall and everything, you're gonna want to get a longer data collection period. If you're gonna do all that, it might, it makes sense to go for a few months, in my opinion, rather than do it just for one month. Because there's a lot of upstart cost there.
So would it be reduced, would the cost be reduced if it was just for one month, to Doug's point?
Not by two-thirds.
Not by two, yeah.
No.
Generator and some fuel.
Renting equipment, the weir walls.
And the renting of the equipment. Because you gotta still build the wall and stuff.
Fair question. Was that explored at all? Or was it just kind of from the beginning, it was like, we're gonna do this for three months because we hope that the beach will be open for the summer?
Yeah, it was just, we kind of went right to evaluating, just, let's do the beach season.
So then the last question, you know, so I'm all for trying it, even though I definitely think that we should be putting every last dollar we have into fixing the pipes. Because I think that's the real solution. I think all these other things are relative panic moves. But I understand, you know, if it helps in the short term, that would be great. So where's this money gonna come from?
Maybe the state, our state legislatures, are they, they're in support of it? Do they have any money that they're putting towards it?
That's a big question.
It is a good question.
Does anybody know that answer?
Well, Lynn is using their ARPA money.
Liz is trying to...
I'm trying to talk. Lynn is using their ARPA money, right, their Kings Beach ARPA money? And I think the legislators would say, you guys had $2.5 million too.
Right.
But how do we, like, didn't we have to commit how we were spending that money?
It's different, that ARPA money is different because it came from the state and so our commitment was to working on cleaning the situation. So we, we're cleaning the pipes, cleaning, getting to a better spot.
All those obligation rules and everything, they're...
So this one was an earmark for the PDC. So we submitted our school reports to them. They approved it and will leave the funds to us. We have checked with PDC and they have...
Oh, God, that's nice.
What is it?
For the last.
We can adjust that earmark as long as it stays within the general scope of dealing with that beach.
Somebody has, someone has a hand.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Have we, because this is in a flood area, have we checked with conservation or anybody that we can even put this here?
We did. Actually, it's outside the realm because it's more than 100 feet from the water. We didn't look into the flood zone, but as far as conservation approval, we don't need it.
Don't need conservation?
Yeah, we checked with Tony because it's 100 feet away from the resource area.
And the people know, to just piggyback on that, people know that it floods there, right? I mean, this equipment's gonna be flooded, probably.
Yes, right.
Right.
It floods, I'm not sure. It definitely floods there because it's a combination, the tide coming in and coming over. I think we'd move the equipment if we knew that was gonna happen.
Equipment's a big, I mean, these are large tanks that are gonna be on the roadway. I mean, I don't think they're gonna be, I don't think, I don't think the water that comes up would reach the top of them.
Okay, generators, pipes, you know, whatever.
Water getting into generators and then coming back into the water that we're cleaning to put back out on the beach seems counterproductive. But, so, we've talked a lot about the wet weather issue and the idea is like the pilot, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the pilot is meant to give us some data that then we could apply towards wet weather situations, which then we could determine whether this is truly a long-term solution.
Yeah, with costs, hopefully with costs put to it.
You mean, cost put to the long-term solution?
I would hope, yeah, I would hope that our engineers could help us, you know, once we get, you know, if, yeah, an updated estimate. Would you?
Yes, either is yes.
Yes.
Okay. And these are no longer estimated costs? This is the true final version of the cost?
No.
This is the true final.
Yeah.
These are quotes. These are quotes. So before it was estimates, now we have quotes from electrical and construction. So it doesn't mean that nothing will change.
Right.
We do have a contingency which they reduce to keep the number at...
Right, there is a contingency.
It's got a 6% contingency at this point.
What did it start with?
10.
And there's no data that we can understand what the costs are long-term for this project? Because this is what I'm afraid of. I'm afraid that, we know UV works, we're gonna have positive efficacy from this testing. We're gonna go to implement it and it's gonna cost the same exact amount as an outfall. And then we're sort of stuck in this position where we invested in this process which has an upkeep to it, right? Not that an outfall doesn't have upkeep. I think we learned our lessons, pipes have upkeep. But the fact of the matter is, I think we're talking about a 20-year span and sort of a lot of maintenance to UV lights and systems and finding a place to house it and all of that. I just don't under, I just, I'm not, that I'm not in support of a pilot. I just am in support of it. I want it to be more of an educated guess and less of a guess, I guess I wanna say. And so if we have a little bit more data about what it might cost long-term, then we might be able to say like, okay, we are getting in a car to test drive it. We know we can afford to buy.
So when they did their original report three years ago, I believe the quote for UV was 25 million. And I believe the quote for the outfall pipe extension was like.
Hundred.
Yeah, really high, like a lot higher. I'm sure 25 is low, just because costs have risen over those three years. And we don't know, you know, we don't know the specs of a permanent solution. That's part of what we're trying to figure out. But once we have that information, I think we can estimate and it will be less than an outfall pipe extension.
But even if we just took the pilot as projected and then estimated it for water flow on great conditions in the outfall for both towns, couldn't we come up with a dollar amount?
Well, that's what I think we need to do the pilot.
We could, but not.
But the pilot is, like, we have a data, we have a dollar amount estimated for the pilot. So why couldn't we just take that same sort of data structure and put it to a bigger?
You absolutely can, you can do assumptions on this.
You can do assumptions, but you're still, you're doing the pilot and see how much rainfall will it work at? And then you can extrapolate that into how big a system.
I totally understand that. I understand, like, whatever dollar amount we would get today would be like the lowest dollar amount this would cost, basically. Because we're basically saying in perfect weather with a very low flow, if we took the pilot and grand scaled it to work in that current perfect condition, it's gonna cost X 10 million dollars, right? So I understand that would be a lowest dollar amount, but at least that would be a dollar amount that we could say like, okay, we went in making an investment into something that we at least knew we could get into the ballpark.
I think that would be the 25 million just revised for current conditions. So we could ask them to do that.
Could we ask them to do that?
How many times during the summer, we only tested, did we test there all the time during the summer? Or was it just once a week?
Once a week.
Once a week. So in that once a week, how many times did we fail?
The Swampscot side?
Yeah.
We were, ah, last summer.
That was before I was here.
So I don't know, this past summer, I only know the summer before. I know the summer before we did weekly tests. And we, over the course of the summer, on our weekly tests, we failed twice.
Wait, what? We only failed twice?
Which has to remember, we only test.
That was two summers ago.
Two summers ago, when we test once a week.
Swampscot part of Kings Beach.
Yes.
From our fall.
Not where the.
One little spot.
Well, it's where they were testing it. When the Board of Health tested, they go three feet out into the water.
Yes.
Right.
When we're testing, we're testing it right at the mouth of the outfall. Naturally, if you go three feet into the water.
No, I'm asking, I'm asking for the Board of Health in the water, the Board of Health test.
Exactly.
Right. Whereas Fisherman's Beach, the testing was done in the water. And we were failing constantly at Fisherman's and then we're able to really see what happens. If a failure, then the bacteria seems to last, especially on hot days for a little bit longer. And we were able to see how it really moves. But over at Kings, the only information we have is the weekly test. And I don't know the results from last, this past summer, but I do know the summer before, according to Jeff Vaughn, we failed on two occasions.
So you wouldn't want our test because, as I said.
I don't want your test. I want where people swim, not in the.
Right, because the purpose is to get the beach open.
I want Jeff, yeah, I want Jeff Vaughn's, you know, the Board of Health test.
In the Kleinfelder report, just along the discussion, fiscal year 2023, Kings Beach was open for swimming nine days out of the summer season. And fiscal year 2024, Kings Beach was open for 30% of the swimming days.
Those are, that's information from Lynn and stuff. I'm only referring to.
This is the Kleinfelder report is what.
I'm referring to the town, our town Board of Health reports, the information.
So I think the last thing that I would like to discuss is the noise, the issue of pollution coming off of the mechanics, the obstruction of view. I think there's gonna be some lighting involved here, so the lighting to the neighbors. Like, I would like to see what this is gonna look like. Like, I know we've not put this out to the neighbors. This is probably the first time they may be hearing about it unless they're watched your committee meetings. But I think for me, that's gonna be really helpful to understand. I understand there's a greater benefit, right, to the city of Lynn and to the town of Swampscot. But we've already told those folks, you can't go on the beach that you're staring at every day. And now you can't stare at it either because we're gonna put a big tanker in front of your view potentially. And you can't maybe sit out on your porch because you're gonna hear the noise. You know, we banned leaf blowers for exactly that reason during the summer months, but we're putting this in front of their houses. So I just think for me to make my decision, I need to understand that part a little bit better because it's the most beautiful time in town. And we're asking them to make a really big sacrifice during that time. So I just, I need some more information for that.
And why are we, why are we looking to split this? Do we have the exact same amount of flow as Lynn? Okay, so that needs to come off the table, right?
And we don't have, we don't have to build a hatch, right? The Lynn side needs a hatch.
They took that out.
Oh, they did. Okay, great.
They took it out and it still went up.
And they what?
And it's still one up. The cost went up.
And we took out IDEX equipment too and it still went up.
No, so, so we have, so we have, just, just so the public is clear, police detail, labor, fill, maintenance, those are gonna be split 50/50, maybe?
Maybe.
Okay, police, since this is going to sit in Swampscot, are we, we would use Swampscot police officers for details?
Yeah, we're only anticipating using the police for the setup and the breakdown.
Okay, and then?
Is that factored in here?
Yeah.
To the cost?
Okay.
Right, yeah, we did figure it, yep.
Okay.
But David, why would we split 50?
No, he's asking. I'm asking the question.
Okay.
And then, and then are there any environmental permits that are needed here?
That's a good point.
I think so.
Not to my knowledge.
That's a question.
Are there any environmental permits? Necessary.
You have to pull permits.
No.
Isn't that crazy?
That's, yeah.
That we're literally doing something to.
You know, I know they talked about noise attenuation, so they're gonna put up an eight-foot fence around it.
That's even worse.
Oh, beautiful.
Oh, good lord. Oh, no.
It's a statement. I'm not hiding anything. I'm telling you where it's coming from.
I, I.
And then?
I did not know that, so.
No.
And then how much, you know, are there generators that are whisper quiet? That would comply with any noise ordinance or anything?
Into electric pumps instead of diesel pumps, but then they said that we wouldn't get the benefit out of the electric pumps. Actually, it was because we couldn't get the electricity down there, right? For the electric pumps.
No, they're going to, I think they're using electric pumps.
Pardon me?
The pumps are electricous.
So the pumps are electricous?
But the generators are diesel. So the generators are not electric.
They can't get the power to that location.
Because we'd have to rely on national grid.
No, because there's not 40, no, no, there's not 480 volt service available. It's both.
If they could bring that in.
Right, they could bring.
They said they could and.
Well.
Oh, okay.
But it's both.
And that service, that service does exist at Pine Tree?
I'm gonna say according to Charlie, yes. He was the former, former owner of the property. That's the only reason I'm giving him some credibility.
Yeah.
Not some, giving him credibility.
So we have to make a decision tonight?
No.
I will. Okay, so when do we have to make a decision by?
Whenever.
I think that's another good point. So I think the reason that, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, the reason that there's a pressure to make a decision is because if the sooner we make a decision, the sooner we can order everything, the sooner we could get started, the sooner it's likely that June will start the pilot. And then that there might be June, July, August swim days open on Kings Beach that we would not have open right now if we did not have a pilot. But to say it, if we need more information and we're not comfortable making a decision and it goes July, August, September pilot.
Right.
I mean, how much swimming are you doing in June? It's still a little chilly, but I mean, if it's going to.
What's the rush is what you're saying?
Yeah, I just feel like I'd rather make an educated, well-thought-out decision and still June, July, be able to have beach days open. I mean.
Does that, does that sound right? I mean, is that really?
Right, is that realistic?
Do we really have another month and does that push it back a month? And is that the way it works or is that not really that logical?
I think work will proceed regardless over the next two weeks. I think if you take two more weeks, the work is gonna proceed. Whatever is being done is gonna continue. Because right now it's all staging and planning. There's not, the only actual work that's gonna take place soon is the hatch for Lynn. And they're paying for that because they get the full-time benefit of it. So I think there would still be pressure to hit that June 1st date, even if you delay until you have a chance to think about it or answered questions that you unanswered. But I wouldn't delay it a month. I would try to do it.
And why is it we are not looking at chlorination and dechlorination, things that.
They won't let us.
I believe that used to be chlorinated, right?
Cannot be done. The E P has said it cannot be done. It was projected.
Isn't that a violation of the Clean Water Act? I mean, that is what we were, that is what we were doing previously.
Chlorinated, yes.
Chlorinating, but not.
No, they don't allow.
We weren't dechlorinating.
Chlorination either.
They recently, they were asked, they recently rejected it again. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
I know that was on the table at the beginning and I know it came to the table pretty quickly, so I'm gonna.
So did we look into a dechlor, you're saying a dechlorination station is against the EPA?
Yes.
Now, whether or not they could be pushed, I don't know, but it was one of the options and it did come off. And it was because, the E P or EPA?
They dechlorinated Deer Island.
Wastewater. So I don't know.
Waste, if they're dechlorinating, if they're chlorinating and dechlorinating wastewater, would there be any reason why?
Send it a mile out into the ocean.
And then they send it out.
A mile, yep.
Right?
A mile, yeah. Okay, so do we need to kind of aggregate our very specific questions out of all this? Or are we ready to vote?
Well, I'm not ready to vote.
I mean, I have questions that I feel.
We meet every Friday, the mayor and the city. I told him it probably wouldn't get voted on this meeting because I used to, select will likes to have two readings. And I said, it would probably come up two weeks from now that we would have an answer on the 19th.
So I would think we need an answer to a number of questions. One is the, what, I'd like to have an answer to what Dr. Vockley was asking for in those meetings?
I don't think he'll have that answer in two weeks, at least that's what I felt saying.
Why?
Which, what are you referring to, Mary?
Wet question. He was asking a number of questions on.
The what conditions?
On the wet conditions and.
I think, I think Dr. Vockley was really interested in someone putting together a stormwater model that, that really mimics what a two-year, well, you know, maybe it's a two-year storm, 10-year storm, whatever it's put through the model, being accurate, you know, be an accurate stormwater model that could really give us an indication of the flow and the amount of water that we're gonna see down there under a real storm condition. That would be the catchment area for the Stacy's Brook watershed, subcatchments within that and basically how the rainwater is conveyed all the way to the culvert and using that model to help analyze the situation down there.
That, that's in terms of like analyzing it for it being successful under all conditions eventually? That's what he's really asking about, like, not just in these mostly dry conditions for the pilot, but like, would it really work?
I think.
For all conditions, is it possible?
Right, I think that was his, one of his messages on Monday's meeting was that he wanted to see it. What would it be like if it was scaled up to the real thing? Would it be effective?
Six times.
And I don't mean to speak for him, but I'm just trying to remember what he said on Monday.
So the other big question for me is, what are, what are the costs, the estimated costs that we're looking at in the future? Just say this thing works, this thing's works, what is it gonna cost? Another, the other question I have is, what is the impact to the neighbors? What are the noise levels?
Lighting, obstruction of view.
Right. What really, there were, there were no answers to those questions on Monday night. So those are, those are things that'll be helped. I just will say, you know, asking us to go 50/50, that makes no sense at all. So.
Well, I'd like to know the flow. Do we have any idea what the relative flow is or anything?
They make.
We must.
At least two and a half times what else is.
Two and a half times.
Two and a half times. So in, in logic, I mean, if you, it should be a 70/30 split, right? If you go by, or maybe a 80/20? If you went by two and a half times, you know what I mean?
Swampscot's taken all, most of the headaches because we're putting the pilot in Swampscot. Yeah, you can make a case for that.
That's kind of, they're taking all the headaches, I guess, right, for.
Plus, we've paid for other things out of pocket that we haven't split 50/50. So if we're living by the beat of our own drum, if it's, if it was our idea prior, we paid for it upfront. And so we spent Swampscot money to the benefit of Lynn and we were glad to do that in, in order to push things forward. Seems here like that might not be the case in reciprocity.
Right.
I just have the zoning bylaw that I just wanted to read real quick about the flood zone, so just to make sure that we're in. So this is 4.2.6.5. All public utility systems, including power, communications, gas, shall be designated in accordance with the Mass State Building Code 780 CMR and shall take into consideration the long-term effects of sea level rise and storm surge. Critical elements of public utility systems that are sensitive to water exposure shall not be permitted below the base flood elevation and shall take into consideration long-term effects of sea level rise and storm surge. So just to make sure we're in compliance with that law with this pilot. So let's just make sure we are, please.
Okay.
We did talk about the noise and there's noise ordinancees in both towns and we would, they would be complied with. And there would be noise attenuation.
Whatever the decibels were, yeah, they're aware, Kleinfelder's aware of that. We gave a building code with the decibels couldn't exceed and Lynn did the same thing. They're gonna get underneath that because whether you like it or not, the way they wanna get around it is.
Right. They're gonna build a fence and they're gonna stifle the noise.
Right.
But I think outside of the decibel of the noise, just the consistency of the noise, is it a low hum that's happening 24 hours, seven days a week, all day long? I mean, I just.
It's gonna be a little bit more than a low hum.
It's gonna be more than a low.
More than a low hum?
So I just, I'd like to understand what that is.
By time, it's gonna sound worse because.
Because it's quiet and, yep. And so people sleep with their windows open to have the beach breeze and they're gonna hear this the whole time. I don't, there's just.
And at some point, there has to be community outreach. There just has to.
Yeah.
We have to engage the community, I mean.
Just waiting for this.
I think the city of Lynn was waiting to see if they had our support and then we're gonna have a town.
The city of Lynn is waiting to see if they have our support for us to talk to our residents?
No, to have a town hall with.
I'm talking about just ours though, really, just our residents that are gonna be affected by.
It's in Swampscot.
Right, so that's, you know.
So they don't, I mean, they could have a town hall, great.
Right, but we need, we need to hear from our people.
We have the town hall.
Exactly.
Because the only way this is.
Oh, it was floated that they could have the town hall at the restaurant, but.
At the Hawthorne.
I mean, I just.
I appreciate like their, like their intent, but they're gonna look out for Lynn. No, no offense to Lynn or anybody else, and I, it's our responsibility to be primarily concerned with the people of Swampscot. And it's really the committees, the committees, part of your objective should be that, right? And worrying about the people that are gonna be affected by this. So that's a big piece for us, but for that committee as well.
Yeah, and I think the last thing, I know this was brought up briefly, but to better understand how you will determine if the pilot is a success. So what are the markers of success for the pilot?
Right, they didn't have that.
So that we can understand when the data comes in, that somebody just isn't saying, oh, this data's great. And then we move on to the next point, but so that we can say, before we had the data, we set the parameters for what was success. And then the data drove the. And then the data drove the success, not the success drove the data. So I just wanna be careful that that is what happens here, so we can live by it. Because if we're gonna ask that neighborhood to take on a building that's gonna house something way bigger than this going forward, it should be backed by the science of it.
I think that, that metric is days open for the beach and some sort of, you know, maybe percent contamination removed from the volume that is entering the tanks.
That makes sense.
I think the latter probably makes more sense, cause days open for the beach, I-
Could be affected by other things, right, or no?
Rain.
Right?
Rain, right?
Automatically closes it.
Is that it could be affected by, so maybe there's some sort of pers-, I'm not a scientist, so I don't-
We've talked about it a lot, but we haven't come up with the exact criteria.
Just thinking, um, like if there were, if you got thirty percent clean days-
Thank you.
Thirty percent rain-free days and of those thirty percent, we got to be open a hundred percent of the time. That would be a data point that would be great to see.
Measurable, right.
Versus we had seventy days, the beach was closed out of two hundred and whatever days of the summer.
A hundred.
A hundred days of summer. We're, we're gonna have Indian summer this year. I don't know.
Okay, so-
And that's a risky run too.
You've got the-
Yeah, oh, that, that's another great point, you know, if it rains all summer, the pilot runs longer?
It'll cost more because we've only rented this equipment for three months.
But if you don't get data that is usable, uh, that's a great point, you know, we should find out what hap-, what's the contingency? Cause six percent of the contingency budget would get us how many extra days if we wanted to go extra days? Might not even get us extra days, we might actually spend it before we start. So if we have a rainy year, what does the farmer's almanac say? We should try.
That's a great question. I have no idea. Okay, so I think we're-
I think it would be interesting, Gino, for you to come back to us with how much of this Lynn is willing to pay for. If we contribute the land and then in the, in the public nuisance, can they contribute the money?
What's the value of that to them?
Period.
And, and if we, and if we don't do anything, can Lynn just drop a testing site in Swampscot?
In Swampscot.
Can they?
Can they?
Yep.
No, they definitely need our permission, but-
Drop a testing site?
You don't know, who knows?
If you're dropping that four hundred thousand dollars, you know, there's, there's gonna be a balance here.
Yeah.
Right.
But I, that's what I thought you guys would do, say, this is what we're gonna offer you, instead of me going back and saying, what's the discount?
Sure, some Mary Ellen in there, we'll see what's- I don't know, I don't know what she's gonna offer them.
Right now, right now, it doesn't look like, I mean, their, their flow is so much higher than ours. We've spent, you know, my understanding is we spent a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars on a study and I've been told that we were going to be getting fifty percent of that study back and I'm hearing that maybe we're not. I think maybe that-
You could use that to your advantage, but the agreement was that Swampscot was gonna pay the whole hundred and eighty-seven thousand.
Okay.
There's goodwill there, right? Like, we did that.
That's what I said to-
Yes, there's goodwill there. We did that and we, we didn't, we didn't expect anybody to pull out their pocketbook. We paid for it and, and it's not that we're not interested in the UV pilot. I think that's clear. It seems like we're all very interested. We're asking a lot of questions. We just are not interested in splitting it fifty-fifty based, and not interested in some of the data points we're missing. So once we have some of that information back, we can talk about it further.
I just, just from my side, just want to be really clear. Spending money on something that we don't know, I mean, I personally feel that there's enough science out there that says UV works on dry weather. I mean, it, they, they do it down in Rhode Island. The issue is, is that really worth an investment? Is, is this pilot pro-, program even worth an investment when we already know that it would definitely work? It would work on dry. This program is not testing wet. It's not gonna give us a good idea on wet. And we don't know what it's gonna be long-term, so it's like, yeah, let's, let's spend all this money and take away money that we would be using to line our pipes and, and then turn around and say, okay, well, it's gonna cost twenty-five million to fifty million dollars to build a UV station. We don't know where we're gonna build it and we don't know how we're gonna finance it. Oh, and then don't forget, we also have to pay for the operations and it's only gonna last like twenty years. So it's just, you know-
Okay.
You know, and that's, th-, those are points that came up at the water, at the water sewer.
We know that it, we know that it treats bacteria. We know, we don't know for sure that it works in dry weather under these conditions. We, we, they haven't tested it under these types of flow conditions. That's the unknown. We're trying to stop water, pool it, pump it. Let it sit for a while, treat it and then send it back out. Those are the things we're testing, not whether it works to kill bacteria.
Can actually chlorinate it, let it sit twenty-four hours. It's a gas, it's a gas.
Uh, the rainfall piece, would you think it's half an inch of rainfall, then we have to stop utilizing the pilot?
It might be a quarter. It's gonna be a quarter or less.
Quarter inch.
But it really depends on whether it's-
That's chlorinated.
In an hour or the whole day?
This is not a pool.
If the machine can keep up-
Okay, got, yes, understood. Yeah, yeah. So if you're-
That's the other piece we don't know and, you know, you can't model all those different-
Sure, sure, no.
Possibilities.
Okay, so we are moving on now. Everybody has their information.
So how, so how quickly can we get answers to these, to, to some of these questions?
So if you guys wanna compile a list of questions, I'll get them right over to Kleinfeld.
Yes.
I think we did, I think we did.
And I think we should, I mean, we should probably ask Chris Vockley what, what we're missing. He is the-
I would like to know what Dr. Vockley also, I, I really would like, I'd feel a lot better getting answers to the questions. You know, he's the vice chair of that committee and to hear him, to hear him at that meeting was very dis-, discerning to me.
I would've felt better if it was a unanimous vote, that's all.
Right.
I mean, that would've made it-
Perfect.
That would, that wouldn't be as much fun.
It would've made it easy. It would've made it easy. This doesn't, this makes it very hard.
Okay, so now we will move on to-
Dismissed, dismissed. Thank you, Ed.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark. Nice to see you. How's your ankle? Sorry.
Uh, much better, thank you.
You just leave it.
Okay, now we're on discussion and possible vote. The select board representative for the town administrator search committee. I had emailed everybody and asked to also bring your recommendations on what you wanna see in a town administrator? And then if we could also choose who we would like to recommend. I'm not really sure exactly the process we should go about this, but we can all, huh, it is a little bit awkward, but we can get through it. So first, can we just go around the table and talk about what you wanna see in the next town administrator? Danielle?
It's a great question. Why do I have to go first? Uh, I, I think at the top of anybody's list would be experience, right? I'd love to see an experienced town administrator. I'd love to see somebody with a financial background, municipal background. But I guess before all of that, right, you wanna make sure you have the right, you know, person of integrity, honesty, commitment to the town. Ideally, I would like to see someone that's familiar with a small town because I think that the scale of, of a municipality makes a difference, right? Anybody coming in is going to be, you know, you have to anticipate a learning curve if they're not familiar with Swampscot, just to understand its population and how this position relates to that population. But, but really, I would love to see someone with experience. I would love to see somebody with municipal experience. I think that's a, that's a deal breaker, right? That's, that's one of my prime, would be one of my, one of my prime considerations.
I think those are all great points. Um, you know, I think we're gonna kind of build a relatively obvious job description here. But, um, you know, someone that's, uh, you know, I, I completely agree with all those things, integrity, experience. Great manager, uh, you know, this is a team sport. And someone who has the capability to communicate with people in town effectively. Not just their own kind of, you know, voice, but in order to ensure the workings of the town are adequately communicated. Um, and, you know, that's a priority for them. Yeah, that's good enough for now.
Doug?
David, you mean?
David?
No, just, just, just building upon our conversation from earlier this evening about our budget. I think someone with a strong municipal finance background is, is gonna be, is gonna be imperative and just being able to juggle. You know, uh, you know, we're, we are a small town of fifteen thousand, but we probably operate as a, at the, at the same, uh, at the same pace as a, as a small or, or medium-sized city with all of our various projects happening. So I think, I think somebody who's able to, um, who's able to multitask. Communications certainly something that we've, that we've been talking about for a number of years. I think, uh, you know, to Doug's point, I thought that, I, I think that's important. And really somebody who's, um, you know, who's engaged and active, um, you know, in the community and really, and really seeing a lot of these, a lot of these things that we've built over the last five or six years, continuing to build as we, uh, as we build upon that muscle memory and, um, and really make the town of Swampscot, you know, a great place to live, work and play. That's, that's my vision.
Katie?
Um, yeah, so when I was thinking about this, I thought like, who could be the perfect fit for this position? And I was like, maybe like a project manager when I think about it because-
I thought you were gonna name somebody.
Oh, yeah, I thought you were gonna say Doug. Doug, it's Doug Thompson, yes, Doug. Um, I'm thinking like a project manager, somebody who's used to obviously handling multiple things happening at once, but still able to keep all the plates spinning, somebody who's able to communicate effectively, somebody who's able to delegate so that things are never stopping, cause, um, I think that, to David's point, we're, we're rapid-paced here, right? And sometimes we get a hold of an idea and we wanna just execute. And so being able to say, okay, this is what I have to focus on immediately and this is how, this is what I can delegate so that things aren't stopping. I think that there has been a lot of hard work in town about our municipal finances and we're coming into a season that, that is going to be sort of like a pressure point for us. So having somebody have that experience is great. If they had a ton of other wonderful characteristics though, could we get somebody there? Sure. So I don't wanna just say like they have to wear all, all the, all the hats are the best, right? But to say they have to wear one hat over another, I'm not quite there yet. I think if you, if you found somebody who was able to wear most of the hats, but lacked some, even hats that we find important, then are there ways to get them up to speed on those things? So I don't wanna pigeonhole and say like, oh, they have to have, you know, a background in finance or municipal finance. I don't know that that's necessarily the case, but then I would be looking for strong suits in other areas and to sort of overcompensate for what they might lack. So that's how I thought about it.
So for me, um, I, I, you know, I'm pretty much I'm in agreement with a well-rounded executive that can manage everything, to be a real manager. Someone who really understands the role, what their relationship is with the select board. Someone who does have a financial background, but not necessarily has to be the end-all. But someone who is committed to, uh, strong finances. Someone who can command respect and deal with union negotiations and be, be honest and straightforward with what's going on and not, you know, try to not give us the real updates on, on what things should be, just really put the facts out there. Someone that can hold people accountable and keep a standard in town. Someone who can, uh, work well with the public, work with the community and understand the community and what all our needs are. I mean, we are a very unique community. It's, we're very involved, we're very emotional. And, um, I just think we just, it's, it's a well, a well-rounded executive. And I did speak with, um, one of the candidates tonight who actually also recommended that we, we consider a candidate who does come from a, a town that has coastal experience. So I wanted to throw that out there too. So I think we've gone over, I think we've gone over everything, Marissa, on what we're looking for in a town administrator. And now we just need to choose somebody that we want to represent us. And then we can, uh, I'll send that over to the town moderator. The town moderator will make his two decisions. And then we will, uh, set the, set the committee in motion. Um, so-
Do we know, do we end up finding out who the people are recommended by a school committee and finding-
Yeah, um, John, what is John?
Giannis.
John Giannis is the school and Eric Hartman is finance.
Oh, they're actually picking people from their committee?
Mm-hmm, they're pick-, so we could pick someone from our committee if we want, or we could pick someone from outside. We do have the ultimate decision in, you know, at the end, so, I mean, does this, it depends on what the committee wants. What, do you want to pick within our own or do you want to go outside? Is there a-
Well, I think, I thought we sort of already decided that.
Okay, just wanna make, I just wanna make sure.
We invited all the people to apply and I just want to say, one of ourselves are gonna look like a jerk, so.
I don't, I would call them back and say, we're only kidding, but, okay. Um, so we are, we're very, very lucky. Um, we have a pool of a number of people here. We have Tavon Amore, Gargy Cooper, Aaron DeRoche, Kristen Dora, Thomas Driscoll Junior, Ryan Hale, James Kasek, Robert Powell, Matt Strauss and Tom Younger. And I will tell you, out of this-
Howard Sidell.
Howard Sidell, I'll say. You left him out. I don't have Howard on my list.
Yeah, it's true. It's not on this list, is it?
It's on this one. Okay, so my list came in on, on the due date. Okay, okay.
He was a late add, I think. I remember seeing an email from Diane about that.
Okay, so, so out of this list, we have a county clerk and magistrate. We have past town administrators, we have past select board members, we have entrepreneurs, HR specialists and multiple committee chairs. This is an amazing list and these people are, are really kind to raise their hand and to do this. This is hard work and I, I really appreciate it. So, um, if we have a recommendation, if you wanna make a recommendation on how to go forward, I mean, I mean, I can only say for me, you know, I have a number of people here that I think would fit really well. I don't know if, do you wanna just, do we wanna recommend a number of people and see who gets the most amount of votes? Do we wanna just put one name out? So I'm open to any recommendations here.
This is hard, cause I, I could pick four people.
Yes, this, this whole group would easily, easily do it and I wish we could just have everybody here.
I really don't.
So-
And it's very, it's very awkward.
It is.
Yes.
The problem is, like, for me, I, okay, I would like to throw Tavon's name out as a choice. I asked him if he might be interested in putting forth his name. His background is in consumer psychology and he is an entrepreneur, as Mary Ellen said. He leads integrations of companies of hundreds of people. He has hired hundreds of people at a time when, when companies buy companies and they need to expand. He, um, obviously understands like a quick, uh, the need to be quick in the market. And so obviously this process is not infinite, right? We're hoping to have it done in a relatively quick fashion. But what, what drew me to sort of ask him to become more involved is that we've spoken a lot about, like how to get leads, how to understand who's out there, how to, um, how to, how to make sure that the search is prosperous in such a way that we have multiple choices in the end. And that we're able to choose the greatest of a great group of people rather than, you know, maybe the best of a, you know, smaller group of people. So he was really like very passionate about using- So he was really like, very passionate about using technology to, like, have a data-driven approach. And I think like as we are talking about being more transparent and being more, uh, Danielle had brought up, which I thought was a wonderful idea, about getting a survey going so that people could feel involved in this process and that it wasn't just something that we put it on the community. All of that takes time, but also all of it takes an understanding of how to use, how to create the data points, like how to, how to create the surveys and how to process that, how to bring the data in, how to read the data, and then how to spit the data back out so that we can understand the data as a community. He really seemed, um, that's very much his wheelhouse. And is a little bit different from some of the other folks who were put forward, who have either already served on this type of committee, who seem to be more in traditional-type HR roles or executive search function roles. So I just felt like he was a little bit something different. Because a lot of these folks had, as we said, we could choose any of them, and they would do a wonderful job.
So we'll say we have one vote for Tavon. Did you wanna say anybody else on here?
He's my vote, so...
He's your one vote, alright.
I mean, if I need, you're not asking for multiple votes right now.
Well, you know, I'm just saying that, you know, when I looked at my list, I looked and I thought, okay, well, if I were gonna recommend a couple people, you know, I would be looking, I was looking more for people that, that had experience in this process, that could lead the process through. So, you know, that's why my, my, my first look was to Erin DeRoche, because Erin is an HR person. And originally when I spoke with Naomi Dreben, who was on the selection, not on the, she was on the select board, Naomi had pointed out how Erin did a great job with organizing everything, keeping everything targeted. And she had her, she had her HR background. And then, you know, I also know that, uh, Tom Driscoll has enormous amount of experience in municipalities and, um, a lot of experience hiring in the court systems. And then I had a, a really interesting conversation with Tom Younger today. Tom Younger has been on several committees, several, several committees of searching for town administrators and, um, school superintendents. And he's, he's been doing this for a long time, so I did, and, and he's also worked with search committees. So he has a lot of background in all that. So those are, you know, I, that's how I was looking at it, but, you know, I wanted to hear what other people had to say.
So, I mean, when I look at it, when I look at this list, it's, it's like the all-star team. Because, you know, Erin DeRoche, I mean, I, I can't think of a more competent HR professional in our town. She really does, I mean, if you look at her resume, you can see the same. She does have experience leading the process as she did last time, which is beneficial. In the same token, um, you know, Tom Younger has done the role, right? He has been a town administrator. I think that there is value in that. I mean, he can speak firsthand to what, what it takes to do the job, and he did it here, and he did it, you know, for a number of years. But then I, you know, I go back to one of the hallmarks of, of what we're trying to do, or what I think we're trying to do as a board, is engage newer people with maybe a fresh set of ideas and approaches that, that we haven't utilized in the past. You know, and I look, and I notice, and I read the resume and the cover letter of Kristen Dore, who, by, by her resume, if you look at it, um, she's a team builder, right? She's committed to communicating and problem-solving and, you know, building a team of people around her. So, you know, I think there's value in that. Honestly, and Tavon, Tavon, I mean, he went to, you know, University of Pennsylvania and Phillips Exeter. You know, this is, this is probably the most difficult decision I've seen in a long time. He's got CEO experience, he hires people left and right, um, you know, he's, he's got, he checks a lot of the boxes. So while I do think experience, um, is helpful, I also wanna see somebody with a fresh perspective, someone that we don't necessarily see on every single committee in town. Somebody that's got an independent mind, that is not necessarily going to be lock, stock with, you know, a certain segment of the population in Swampscot, right? Someone that's going to, to think outside of the box, which is, you know, I think, I think as we chart a new course for leadership in this town, it's important that we get innovative thinkers and people that are thinking outside of the box. And I think if we continue to go with the same people, that, you know, while I appreciate that they're on many committees in town, it's, you know, we're not changing with the times, right? We're not thinking with a fresh perspective. So I think that if I look in that respect, then I have to consider people like Tavon, Kristen. Um, I, I, you know, and, but then I feel badly because, you know, Erin DeRoche and Tom Younger are, you know, would normally rise to the top of any pile that I, that I would have, so those are kind of my thoughts.
Alright, well, let's, let's just talk through this. Doug?
Uh, well, just to continue the pattern of, um, diversifying the options, um, to me, I, uh, I agree. Tons of great people here with, you know, lots of, uh, experience, uh, in, you know, Swampscot. And, um, you know, I, I think you mentioned it last time, Danielle, about like, you know, some of these people are great, but they were involved last time, so, you know, even though I, uh, you know, Bob Powell is super-involved, great guy, done a lot of hiring, you know, innovative, you know, all these other things we've said. I mean, he did it last time, you know, Erin did it last time. So to me, that kind of, you know, make room for someone new. And different, really different perspective. Um, and so I, I don't even know this Howard Sid, Howard Sidell guy. But in some ways, that's, that's what he does. That's all he does, actually, is, is hire people, senior leaders. For twenty-five years. Intriguing.
Yeah, I agree.
He went to Harvard. Psychology. So, um, I, I agree, there's, like, there's a lot of good options here, but I suppose, like, I'm intrigued, even though I have, you know, people I'm very friendly with that are on this list, and I'm not, you know, that I'm sure would be great. But to me, that's, that's interesting, especially in the context of the people that Finance Committee is recommending and School Committee is recommending. We've got people that are immersed in town government already. You know, we could rely on the moderator to do that balancing, but for me, that's... I'm recommending a person I don't even know.
This packet will go to the moderator right away tonight, too.
What's that?
This, the packet is going to the moderator, too. Okay.
Yeah, uh, yeah, to me, Howard Sidell really stood out as being, as being someone who was not involved, but for this particular situation could be, um, it just stood out to me as, as, as the best individual of the eleven. Again, to echo, I, I, I don't think we could go wrong with any of these eleven. But Howard Sidell's name and experience just really stood out to me as being, um, as being a cut above, especially if we're looking to diversify and get people who have not yet been involved, but whose experience would allow them to, to really, uh, to really contribute, uh, in a big way to this, uh, to this committee. So that would be my recommendation, would be Howard Sidell.
Alright, so we have, Howard Sidell has two recommendations. Kristen has one recommendation. Mr. Amore has two recommendations. So I think if I had to make a decision, I, uh, I would go with Mr. Amore, based on his experience as a CEO and, um, the things that he has accomplished. So that's where I would go with that. Because my, my folks didn't get...
Didn't get a second?
I, I would motion to then approve.
Approve Mr. Amore?
Mr. Amore.
As our selection?
As our selection for the Town Administrator Search Committee.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we need any more discussion than what we've already had? Hopefully not. Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Voice didn't vote. Didn't vote.
Yeah.
You didn't vote?
No.
Oh, my God, I'm sorry, I'm getting tired.
It's okay.
Can we have a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed?
Opposed.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
So, um, I guess, just as a follow-up, I know we've already said we're sending this packet over to the moderator. I would say if the moderator would consider Howard as a choice, that it was clear that the board viewed him as a very well-received, uh, selection. I know he's got his own choices, but just wanna say that.
Alright. So... Marcy, you will make sure that the moderator has all of that, right?
I already sent him the packet right before the meeting, but I'm happy to follow up and, um, give him a quick summary of the discussion.
Did you, did you send them, you sent them the two-four? Because there were, there were two sets of...
Yeah, so the one that I sent him is the one that's been included in your packet, which has Howard Sidell's resume and letter of interest. It's the one with the blacked-out box that redacted the email address and phone numbers. So he has the most updated version.
Got it.
That was included in the packet.
Okay. Now we move to the update on the citizens' petition. That's a, we have a certified citizens' petition, so we will be, uh, calling for a special town meeting within the next forty-five days. I've already started the process of getting a, um, getting a location. I'm going to email the moderator in the morning to find out what his schedule is looking like. Trying to find out if we, if we, if we have this a little bit later in that, within that forty-five days, if there's any possibility of getting that bylaw updated for the Community, for the Community Preservation Act. We have to find out from the lawyers what the possibility is on that.
Yeah, so you have until, um, you have to hold the special town meeting on or before March twentieth.
Right.
Forty-fifth day.
Right.
And depending on how your agenda item eight goes tonight, um, in discussing that bylaw, I have two different warrants drafted already. So the motion lang, uh, the warrant language is already in there referencing an appendix where the bylaw would go. So if you are able to, um, as a board, come together with what that bylaw would look like, then I can get that plugged in, and, uh, I've already spoke with town council and booked twenty-four-hour turnaround on them reviewing and approving the warrant.
Okay, so could we just, could we end up just having the community, could we just have a conversation about that tonight briefly, and then come two weeks later and make a decision? And could you work behind the scenes and just find out what's in our best?
I would, I would love to. In fact, I'm surprised it's even on here, because I had a conversation with Marcy saying that I would love to consult with all the people that were working on this, and she said, great. So, I'm not really, but anyway, it's okay, get it started.
Okay, so, so, so let's, then let's move to the community preservation. But, so where are we, though, with that?
Uh, I believe town council has sent numerous, uh, other towns' bylaw examples.
Right.
Is that what you mean, Mary Ellen?
Yeah.
Okay.
And...
I mean, as a reminder, right, like, so we got passed, and the next step here is that we have to form a committee. And so that's really what this is about.
Well, I think the next step is we have to pass the bylaw and then form the committee. That's what I've been told.
If you pass the bylaw, it will go through the ninety-day review, and then once that bylaw is enacted, you'll appoint the committee.
Right, that's, that's my understanding, Doug.
But the bylaw identifies who will be on the committee, not the individuals' names.
Yeah.
But where, which committees they come from. That's what we have to, we have to form the Community Preservation Committee structure. That's what this bylaw is.
Form the idea of the committee.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Right.
And specifically which roles or which committees you want people to come from.
Alright, so let's, let's talk about that a little bit tonight.
So there are five of them that are required.
Yep.
Right, the first five that are listed here, one from the Planning Board, one from the Conservation Commission, one from the Historical Commission, one from Parks and Rec, and, um...
Looks like a typo there.
Yeah, I see Dyson, right, I was like, what? And, uh, one from, I, I don't actually know whether or not it's required that it's from the Housing Authority.
It is required.
It is.
It is.
Authority?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Wouldn't make sense.
I thought it had to be a housing group. I didn't know if it could be the Federal Housing Trust, but, okay. So then the others are optional, and you can go up to nine. So five are required, you can stop at five, or you can add one, two, three, or four more. And you can do that, uh, in various ways, uh, including, um, you know, someone appointed by, additionally appointed by the Select Board, someone appointed by, you know, you can do it however you want. You could have someone elected. There could be at-large elections for roles on the CPA as well. And all the rest of this, in terms of the duties that's in front of us, is like right out of the regulations. So there's not really much discussion there. As far as I'm aware, Amy, correct me if you know otherwise, um, it's really about the members of the Community Preservation Committee.
Yep, so the bylaw just has to state that what the makeup of the committee is going to be. You know, you're five up to nine, um, if they're gonna be appointed or elected, who's gonna be the appointing authority, what their purpose is, and how you're going to do the terms. Are they gonna be three-year terms? Are you gonna stagger the terms? And after, you know, I, some of these bylaws are only a page, so...
So Parks and Rec, I assume that's the Recreation Commission?
Yeah. Not the TV show.
Right.
If only.
And we can choose to whether or not to have these, uh, the additional people as elected?
Mm-hmm.
Officials?
You can do elected, appointed by moderator, appointed by a select board. There may be another option that I haven't seen.
Do you have a recommendation, Doug?
I do not.
What communities do elected? Do we know?
I could look it up, but I don't know offhand. I don't, I don't think many people do that. Some do, and it's usually one, as far as I'm aware, but I can confirm that next time.
And the average size of the committee, does, we have, we don't have the data?
Yeah, I don't have it.
Yeah, so...
Most that I've seen have gone for the full nine.
They've gone for what?
For the full nine.
Full nine, okay.
Because this could be, this could be a fair amount of work. You know, if you imagine, right, this is gonna be something like a million dollars a year that's gonna be raised by this. And there's gonna be a lot of projects that are gonna be recommended to this group, that they're gonna have to, you know, prepare, right, the first thing they have to do is prepare a study of all the needs and possibilities and resources, et cetera, et cetera, that, you know, the town is interested in receiving proposals for. Like, say, the town, ultimately, the committee. And then they have to set up, you know, a process of taking in the proposals, and they have to evaluate the proposals, and they gotta recommend them, then to town meeting. So it's not a, it's not a light lift.
No, okay.
I think more is probably better in that regard, right? Because many hands make light work, although I don't think the work will ever be light for this committee, and hopefully we'll have a lot of ways to spend a lot of money for them. So I think it makes sense to stay on the larger side. I also think, uh, if we do elect, it would make sense not to elect all four of the additional folks who come on here. That it would be like three appointed, maybe one elected, if that's the way people are passionate about having an elected person on here. But we all know getting elected is a lot of work and energy and money, and so if people are inclined to appoint, then maybe we could appoint some and allow the moderator to appoint one, or something like that. So it's not just centralized in one body.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, my, my thought would be, keep your, keep a committee, have a committee of nine, two appointed, uh, from the Select Board to appointed by the moderator. If we could potentially get this to a page, that would be ideal. You know, uh, I don't see the need to, to have a, to have an elected position. If I had to, it would be one, but I, I think, I think the appointees... But I, I think, I think the appointees from the select board and the moderator would be, would be sufficient for this, for this committee. And whoever's going to come into this, this is, this is going to be a whole heck of a lot of work, as, as Doug explained. So, you know, the, so for that reason, I'd, I'd, I'd want to be at nine.
I agree.
Yeah.
I think we're all in agreement of nine.
Nine.
Yeah, and I think it's really important to stagger terms, because the last thing you want to do is create a committee and then have a brand-new committee.
Yeah.
Yep, agree. Agree.
I think the way it's written here is really nine and all of them appointed with the staggered terms, makes sense. I don't see why we would do anything different.
Yeah. We don't need to reinvent the wheel here.
No.
I think Dyton has good language, where they have, they have the nine.
Yep.
And then it has two members appointed for an initial term of two years thereafter three, one member appointed with an initial term of one year thereafter three, and one member appointed for a term of three. And that way, it auto-staggers for you.
Yep, I agree with that. That's good.
All right, so why don't we think about it and come back to our next meeting? And pull the trigger on that, all right?
Okay.
Okay. Why do we have here a discussion of executive session minutes?
I don't, I have questioned this on this agenda.
I don't, I don't know what that-
This is a gentleman.
I don't know that was, that was, I think that was an accident.
What about code of conduct and handbook?
That's-
We don't have, we have to take out the code of conduct, because we don't have, we don't have the update.
So, I had originally asked Diane, just so everybody knows, I had originally asked Diane if we could have this discussion, because we got comments back from town council.
Right, legal, yeah.
I then looked at the comments back from town council, and I can send them all out, but some of them are just like, yes, we agree with that language, so we can just accept those. And then there's very few left. So, I wanted to sort of clean it up and then redistribute it out to you guys so that we were concentrating efficiently on just the ones that need, needed commentary. So, I did not do that yet, and I didn't meet with Danielle to go over them. So, we didn't do that yet, and then she just added it on to the next agenda, so.
But you didn't do the code of conduct, you did the handbook.
No, we did the handbook.
Right.
But we wanted it vetted by council.
Right, the handbook.
We wanted to bring it back to you guys.
We did the handbook.
Right.
But didn't we already have that done by the coun, by council when we finally voted on it?
No.
We did, and we, and we changed some like, like, we changed some language. And so, like, for example, the language about public-
Social media.
No, I'm sorry, the language about public comment. We changed some of the language about public comment. So, that especially had to go back to, to town council to make sure that we were still within our legal rights-
Yep.
-for public comment and how we're trying to manage it, so.
And we're still waiting? That was-
No, no, I have the comments back, and I'm just going to go through and sort of accept the comments that they accepted and then put forward to you all what's left. Because there were one or two comments where we still need to flush some things out, or we just can't do it, so.
But I thought we're also, we also were working on, oh, we're going to have a separate attachment for social media and-
We did that.
Mm-hmm, okay. That we have to vote on.
We did not vote on anything yet.
Mm-mm, right. Okay.
You voted on the handbook.
We voted on the handbook.
We voted on the handbook.
We voted on the handbook, and then it got vetted, so now we, I'm just bringing you back the comments. The code of conduct, we did not vote on. Social media policy, we did not vote on.
No. Okay. All right.
All right, so we're not doing that.
Okay, so that will come back, so that's the reason why it's out there. So, now we can move the consent agenda?
I just had a question to Gino.
Yes.
What is a J.O. poll?
Joint poll.
Wow.
That's a good point.
It just says installation of one J.O. poll.
J.O.
Joint poll.
Joint poll. Basically, what's happening here is, Elm Place is 26 feet wide when it was laid out. It was only third, this is eight feet into the right of way. So, we got to get it moved eight feet in.
Yep.
And it's right on the property line between 1460 Elm Place and 145 that six street.
Okay.
We're already approved part of this petition, they just added on the moving the poll. It's the second part. I don't know if you've seen it.
Got it.
But now the public package, yes, it is.
Yeah, it's in here, yep.
And then while we're on, while we're on the topic of polls, on burpee-
Yes.
There's that poll that's, it's the double poll that's kind of leaning over burpee.
Yep.
Is that, is that going to be fixed in '25?
I hope so, yeah. I'm going to get Mark on that. What happens is, we may be responsible for that right now, because you have to move the wires from the bottom up. I think it might be fire alarm on that that has to be removed first, the ball's in our foot.
Okay.
I'll get on it.
Okay, I just, I drive by, I drive by, you drive by it every day.
Likewise.
Yeah, yeah. I'll, I'll move the consent agenda.
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, select board time, Danielle?
I have nothing.
David?
Nothing.
Doug?
No.
Katie?
Good, thank you.
Mary Ellen?
I just have one comment, and it is, the retirement board want to make sure that I let everybody know that they will be coming to talk to us about COLA increase. So, I have sent out the video of their, their clinic that they did last year. If you, if you need that again, I'll send it out again, get yourself educated on that. The other thing is they are changing, they're making a change in their portfolio because they don't like the return on one of their sleeves. They're, they're a little too heavy on real estate, and that takes a long-term change. So, they're making an adjustment with their, they have a new advisory group, which they're very happy with. The advisory group is recommending to make this change. They're going to make the change, and that's what they wanted me to report that.
Joint-owned poll, sorry, I left out the old part.
Joint-owned, okay.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I just hope all the, I hope all the kids in Swampscot who are still watching at 10 o'clock at night enjoy their snow day tomorrow.
Yeah.
I heard that snow day was canceled.
No.
It's back to school, that was-
Fake news.
My kids and my husband will be home.
Nice try. Okay, so who had the over/under on the 10?
We said over. At 10:30, we said the over/under was three hours.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.